Worlds, whether they're virtual or augmented reality are satisfactory for long-term use. Although I will say that there are people who wear headsets and play video games and seem to do so for hours at a time. My guess is the general public may not be as comfortable as perhaps the VR players, uh, video game players are. But it does literally offer a new dimension in which people could interact. If for my money, I think that the augmented reality space may turn out to be the most useful in the beginning, where we see the real world and we see it annotated with additional information that can help us navigate or help us understand what's going on. Maybe we use it to do repair work because we can see the object that we're working on. We can see the augmentation that shows us how to perform the repair or the assembly or something along those lines. Uh, in the long run, uh, perhaps we will see technologies that make it more comfortable uh, to be presented with that three-dimensional environment. The other thing I would point out with virtual reality is that you can create uh, a uh, a kind of universe which is computed. And in those cases, it may very well be that simulations will turn out to be extremely useful in order to explore ideas, new designs, and things of that kind of complex systems that allow us to explore it in three dimensions.
And that will really uh, be able to, that will really enable humans to be able to function as they do uh, in, in the real world, for, for better or worse.
Well, you know, if I, if you think about some of the headsets that people wear uh, to play video games, imagine trying to do a video conference like the one we're in the middle of now. Uh, and you'd have this thing on your, on your head, making you look like Darth Vader. And, and so that's probably not what everybody wants to look like. So you'd have to have a, uh, an avatar that looks like you, or maybe looks like you would like to look. Uh, for example, I would probably have an avatar that has hair. Maybe you would too. Uh, it goes, now we have the question of, is this the real person? Uh, is this what the real person looks like, or is it what the real person wants to look like? So who knows? Uh, you know, what, what will reality be? Was virtual reality may not be real reality.
Yes, we uh, at USC have been working on election cybersecurity. Thank you for uh, guiding us on that and for your support. And we just were talking with some senior people in the UK and saying, okay, well now especially with AI tools, uh, someone could appear to be uh, Vince Surf, but it's not really Vince Surf. So what do you do? And his advice was call him back.
Well, several things occurred to me. We, you mentioned providence earlier in our discussion. And I think we may find a kind of norm emerging where in order for parties to avoid being misrepresented by someone using these tools, uh, that they would want to digitally sign a video or an audio or an image, or even a text message in some way which would be hard for someone else to fabricate. And so the idea of strong authentication might turn out to um, be quite necessary. And it might also become a social norm. In other words, if you see something which is not authentic, uh, authenticable uh, or authenticated, then you might view it with more suspicion than you would uh, something which has a strongly authenticated origin. Having said that, I will say that the conspiracy theorists do play on uh, at least some humans view that there are all these secrets out there that the government or some government group doesn't want you to know. And so when you present the information and it is inauthentic, you might still believe it because you believe in conspiracy theories. And so technology doesn't solve all problems, but it might introduce a different kind of social norm where people will accept uh, as, as more legitimate things that are digitally signed and more authenticated than things that are not.
Very much now in the news is a technology which really wasn't uh, it's, it's very new. It didn't exist seven or eight months ago. Uh, artificial intelligence, particularly large language models. Now, how does that uh, affect your work and the internet?
Well, first of all, uh, the notion of a large language model is, is not exactly as recent as it might seem. Its visibility certainly is recent, but the, the work on multi-layer neural networks has uh, proceeded for well over forty years. And I would say about twenty years ago, we started to see some serious results uh, from being able to build these uh, very large multi-layer neural networks. The large language models ingest enormous amounts of text, uh, much of it scraped off of the world wide web. Uh, and it creates a kind of statistical model of what uh, good quality human discourse looks like. The, the problem with the large language models is that uh, they create this statistical model of good discourse. It grammatically generally pretty good from, based on the material they've used to build the model. Uh, you uh, you generate the output. These are also called generative AI uh, systems. They generate the output one token at a time where you can think of a token as a word or a phrase. Uh, and they don't go back, at least not the current crop. They just keep generating output. Uh, perhaps you've told that did write a seven hundred page, or I'm sorry, seven hundred word uh, op-ed or something like that. However, even if these models have been trained with absolutely factual material, they're capable of confusing and conflating the facts and producing misinformation. I did a little experiment with one of the uh, large language models. I asked it to write an obituary for me, for Vince Surf. And I did that partly because I uh, assumed that the obituary form would be uh, likely to have been ingested by the model because there are plenty of obituaries on the internet. Uh, people die every day and people write obituaries about them. And I also assumed that there would be a fair amount of information about me on the, on the web. And indeed, that's true. But what happened is that the system generated an obituary which had the right form. It started out, you know, we're sorry to report Vince Surf passed away. Then there was some information about my career and then there was some information about the remaining family members. But it conflated things I had done with things other people had done. It gave me credit where I didn't deserve it. Gave other people credit for stuff I'd done. And it made up family members that I don't have. And the reason that this happens, as I see it anyway, is that the system doesn't know fact from fiction. It only knows that certain words and terms occurred in some relationship to each other. So uh, Adam, imagine that you and I are mentioned on the same webpage. And there's information about you and there's information about me. The fact that the information is on the same webpage creates a certain kind of um, colocation, if you like. And it's easy to imagine the model conflating something about you and something about me because of the fact that the information was on the same webpage. So we do have a problem. And the closest I've been able to come to imagining what to do uh, is to think in Freudian terms. What we have here already is the artificial id and the artificial ego. But what we do not yet have is the artificial super ego. And of course, that's the next major step uh, in development is figuring out how to control what the experts call hallucination in the large language models. But I want to emphasize how useful they could be. If, if you're interested in brainstorming, if you're interested in uh, you know, uh, fiction, uh, the system is quite good at making things up or at, at creating summaries or dialogue or writing stories. And so if you're interested in entertainment, uh, it's a perfectly reasonable tool to use. But if you're interested in medical advice and diagnosis and treatment or financial advice, you might want to think twice about asking a chatbot uh, what to do. And so the experts have figured out how to control its hallucinating uh, tendencies.
Thank you, Vince Surf, for a hallucination-free half hour. Uh, this is, this has been the White House Chronicle. I'm Adam Powell. We'll be back next week.
Toxic therapy from your vape.
Can't sleep? Listen to my voice. Your friends all bailed on you. Your crush thinks you're thirsty. The planet is dying. Keep obsessing till 5:00 AM.
vaping nicotine is associated with sleep problems. Find solutions at thetruth.com.
I'll find it. Let me see if I can.
About a minute, Tom.
Okay.
I'm assuming you need some more time.
Yeah. Pardon? Okay, yeah. I need one more minute, yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
Just, I need this, this script for the, you know, that would be a recording. That's.
All set, Tom, or? Need a minute soon?
One, one more minute.
Sure, sure.
I gotta. Let's just double-check the date here. Okay, I'm ready. Thank you.
All set?
Yep.
Okay, stand by. Five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the December fourth meeting of the Select Board. It's a joint meeting with the School Department and the Finance Committee. Um, I'm Select Board Chair Tom LaCusso. I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipating the agenda or present can hear me. Uh, so members, when I call your name, please respond the affirmative. Josh Levine?
Here.
Vinit Hemalvi?
Here.
Here.
Uh, Mark Gold?
Here.
And Dan Zwirko?
He's being moved in now, so if you want to just roll back to that.
He's, he's, okay, so he's in there somewhere in there. Okay, good. And staff, when I call your name, please respond the affirm- affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
Okay. And we should have our accountant's name up there. Um, but um, our CFO. So this is an open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board convened in person via Zoom webinars posted on the agenda of the town's website, identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q and A function. All materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on thelongmeadow.gov website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in this meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comment. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. If anyone in the attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. Seeing none, uh, we'll now begin with the.
Can we, can we have the school committee and?
Well, yeah, well, the school department, yeah. Why don't the school board, school committee, uh, why don't you start your meeting?
Uh, thank you. We're actually gonna hold on that for one moment. One of our members is uh, stuck in traffic, so we don't quite have a quorum yet, but.
Okay.
Momentarily.
Well, we can do the pledge of allegiance to the.
Long Meadow traffic?
Okay. Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And we also have the Finance Committee, um.
Yeah, Eric Whitehead, Chair of Finance Committee. And then out there, um, Bill, we, we have a couple attendees who are Kara Stevens and William Walter out there, who are also on the Finance Committee.
Okay, so you should get a motion here.
Nora McKay. Okay, so we have.
All right.
Four members out there.
Can someone make a motion to open your meeting or?
Um, I make a motion to open the meeting. Over there, I got there. Kara, can you second, please?
Seconded.
Okay.
All in favor?
We still roll call vote, I guess.
Okay. Uh, Bill, you okay with starting the meeting?
You have to unmute yourself. Yep.
Yes.
Uh, Nora? Nora, are you okay with, um, what's your vote?
Yes.
Okay, and Kara? Oh, she left. Okay, well, there you go. That's anonymous or unanimous.
All right. And we're still wait? Okay.
As soon as she's here, we'll be ready to start.
So this is, uh, I, you know, when this happens and you, and we don't have all members, you can't start is what I usually. Huh?
You call, you know, roll call Dan.
Oh, roll call, oh yeah. And Dan Zwirko, you wanna, just announced you're here at the meeting?
Here. Sorry, I was gonna mute.
All right, so. All right. So, um, well, good. I, I would, you know, I have this great trick where I break an apple, but it's not a trick. But I don't have any apples, so uh, we could do a little song and dance.
No, we can get started. We can start a presentation. The school committee will call to order when you get a quorum.
Exactly.
Okay, so we could start with a presentation um, on the budget process and objectives.
Tom, can I just, I'll do an introduction then?
Uh, yeah.
Great. So uh, just as we've done in years past, the kickoff to the FY twenty-five budget actually starts now. Um, and here with us tonight is our new Finance Director, Ian Coddington. So for those who haven't met him, um, Ian is here with us tonight doing our budget kickoff. Uh, same thing as in years past, we'll walk you through a bunch of slides, kind of give you where we are and what we're, what we know as of now, uh, which will definitely change by the time we get to February and March when we finalize budgets. Uh, and then there's always an opportunity at the end to ask questions. So with that, I will kick it to Ian.
Awesome. Thank you, Lynn. Good evening, everyone. This presentation is high level in nature. I have provided you what I think to be is the most important points regarding our preliminary budget. I realize that departments might have specific questions related to their own budgets. I encourage you to bring those questions or concerns to me as the budget process rolls on. The presentation is broken into two parts, sources or revenues that the town receives and uses or what the town expends. Next slide. The property tax levy is estimated at the full extent allowed under Proposition Two and a Half at the beginning of the FY twenty-five budget forecast. Prior year's levy limit is increased by two and a half percent, which comes out to one point four million, specifically one million, four hundred eight thousand, five hundred sixty-seven. For FY twenty-four, just as a note, this was also voted for by the Finance Committee at their last meeting that was approved for the full two and a half percent increase. With the increase in sales prices of residential homes in calendar year twenty, twenty-two and twenty-three, the possibility of hitting the Proposition Two and a Half limitation of taxes at two and a half percent taxable valuation is pushed off to at least ten years with minimal future growth in market valuation. The town will still abide by the two and a half percent annual limitation in property taxes. New growth is estimated at two hundred thousand, which is in line with historical trends. Net state aid is estimated to increase by four percent, which will come out to three hundred forty-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-six as an estimate, which is conservative in nature. At the most recent MGFOA meeting, which I attended on eleven fifteen, the Mass Tax Foundation did a presentation on state-level revenues, and there was no indication of extreme increases or declines in revenue. The largest piece of the town's state aid, Chapter Seventy, which is for public elementary and secondary schools, is expected to increase about two hundred eighty thousand, from seven point one million to seven point three eight million. Next slide. Most local receipts are internally estimated to increase overall by two percent, which comes out to about a hundred thirty thousand. Vehicle prices continue to rise. Interest rates are at the highest levels since the global financial crisis. And ambulance revenues are increased as a reflection of actuals. The largest piece of local receipts, which is motor vehicle excise taxes, is expected to increase about forty-seven thousand, which brings it from two point three five million to two point three nine seven million. Stormwater enterprise funds, the budget will cover about fifty-eight percent of its budget through fees, which is an increase about four point one one percent from FY twenty-four, where the budget covered fifty-four percent of its budget through fees. This percentage increase aligns with the Select Board's policy to fully fund the stormwater enterprise fund through fees by twenty thirty-six. The general fund is gaining fifty-five thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars because of a greater shift to stormwater revenues. As a final point for sources, no reserves are being used in this calculation, which gives us an estimated FY twenty-five budget assumption of two million, one hundred thirty thousand, five hundred forty-two for the general fund. Next slide. Uses. Wages, both school and non-school, are estimated to increase three percent to cover both cost-of-living adjustments and step increases. Specifically, in the general fund, we are expecting three hundred forty-six thousand for non-school wages to increase and nine hundred ninety-eight thousand for school as an increase, which brings about one million, three hundred forty-five thousand. This is subject to change with attrition and the wage-in-class study, which has not been finalized. Other expenses are estimated to increase about half a percent to cover inflation and other ancillary costs, which comes out to about seventy-three thousand dollars. Now, this could change, and certainly inflation has an effect, but we want to estimate on the conservative side. The largest piece of uses when it comes to the general fund is the employee-retiree benefits. General fund employee-retiree benefits are increased at various rates. Retirement is at an eight percent increase. Liability insurance is at a seven and a half percent increase. This is due to trends in the marketplace as well as loss rates. Loss rates are losses that insurer incurs compared to premiums paid. And due to marketplace conditions in the last couple of years, this has created uh, insurance companies to require higher premiums, which lower what we expect to be received back to the town. Health insurance, employee and retiree, we expect to be at about four percent. The trust fund is performing well. Now, these rates will not be set until February. And Medicare is at three percent, which is in line with wage increases. Before you go on. So in total, this employee-retiree benefits increase is about one point three six five million, with the largest two pieces being retirement, which is three hundred forty-five thousand, and the OPEB contribution, which is at six hundred ninety-five thousand. The contribution to the OPEB retiree fund is calculated at six hundred ninety-four thousand per the Select Board's eleven sixteen twenty revised policy. Contribution amount for FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four was funded at one point one four percent of the tax levy. This is expected to be increased to one point two percent of the tax levy for FY twenty-five in order to keep moving towards the one million dollar slash two percent per year funding target set by the policy.
Yeah, Ian, if you could just hold your presentation for a second. Can I let the school board open their, uh, school committee open their?
Sure, thank you. Um, we are here and have quorum, so we now officially call the December fourth, twenty twenty-three School Committee Meeting to order. And we are in session.
Okay. And do you take a vote or?
We don't usually.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ian.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Um, as an item that is omitted, that would be total debt service. I did not include that in the presentation, but I am including it as an item of note in the actual discussion. Total debt service is calculated amounts due when known and some are estimated. This is estimated to decrease about three hundred twenty-one thousand, which is netted from four hundred fifty-one thousand in enterprise funds and a hundred and twenty-nine thousand increase in general funds. Is mainly attributable to the paydown of interest and principal and outstanding debt. But as a caveat, this does not include the January twenty twenty-four borrowings that we are expecting, which see, should see an additional ten million dollars of debt. This is related to the water sewer improvements for the L projects that will take place in twenty twenty-five. Debt service excluded from Proposition Two and a Half is estimated to be five point nine million, which is a decrease of about twenty thousand dollars from FY twenty-four. And this excludable debt will level off through FY twenty twenty-seven. Go ahead. The last piece is capital contribution increase. Capital contribution is calculated as per Select Board policy, which is three percent of the net general fund revenues less any debt exclusion amount, which comes out to about two point one nine million, which is about a sixty-four thousand increase from prior year, which gives us a total uses of two point eight million, two million, eight hundred forty-eight thousand, one hundred forty-three, which gives a general fund FY twenty-five budgeted deficit of seven hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred one. I realize that this proposed deficit might cause alarm for individuals who might worry about the ability to fund such expenses. Could this mean a reduction in services? I'd like to tell you that this is a normal occurrence as part of the budget cycle. Historically, we've seen comparable amounts as a deficit at the beginning of the budget season. Finance Department, myself, and Lynn's office will be facilitating collaboration amongst the different departments and ultimately arrive at a balanced budget when Lynn presents the finalized numbers.
Okay, thank you. So we'll open it up to questions from anyone in the room or online. Um, you can raise your hand if you're on the Zoom connected. Mark Gold will give you a first shot.
Thanks. Thanks, Ian, for this presentation. I, I, I want to just reiterate for the folks at home who may be watching this that the numbers you showed are changes. They're increasing revenue and increasing expenses and not our overall budget because sometimes you don't read the fine print and don't know that. So I guess my, my question is leverage. If, you know, between now and February, March, April, whenever it is we finalize these things, most of these increased expenses are what I'll call locked in. They're retirement, liability insurance, health insurance. You know, they're, they're employee benefits. There's not a lot of leeway with the exception of OPEB. So can you just talk about what you see as, as leverages to either generate more revenue or reduce our expenses to close the seven hundred seventeen thousand dollar gap? And the other thing I'll point out for people who are in the room for the first time is I've been doing this a long time and every year it starts out and you have this kind of discussion of where, where, how does that seven hundred seventeen get to zero between now and April? And it somehow seems to get there, but it's not without some trial, so. If you have any suggestions, I'd love to hear.
Mark, I would say the most important thing that people need to know is that these are about priorities of the town. So priorities may be different for the Select Board, for individual Select Board members. So given that information, I would require you to dispel your views, what you're looking for, what your goals are. I can then take that information and modify the budget in order to better reflect what your goals are. And that can be dispelled to the different departments. So we know that there might be a big project for the DPW coming next year. So we would put something else off that's not a priority. That would be how I would handle that situation.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, Jamie?
Yeah. Thank you very much. Can you just go back to the first slide?
Mm-hmm.
So I just have a question more as an individual. Right there. Stop right there. Side of the slide. So this new, the new growth, the two hundred thousand, what is it, is that, is that represented? Is that just uh, something you're plugging in or is that something with some statistical fact behind it?
So that individual number is an estimate. We have a more exact number that we won't see until, you know, finalized uh, tax rates come out. But if, for an example, the twenty twenty-four growth, I believe, is about two hundred seventy to two hundred eighty thousand. And you'll see that at the tax reclassification meeting.
And you'll see that at the tax reclassification meeting earlier or later on tonight. So as a historical trend, we've used about two hundred thousand dollars as a new growth number in order to give us some leeway in order to determine if there's room for us to move around what we determine are important budget items. So that gives us a little bit of wiggle room come budget season.
Jamie, if I could answer your question specifically, new growth is generally people putting additions on their houses, people, you know, building permits. In twenty twenty five, it would not include the first church expansion because that won't show up.
Yeah, it won't be done yet.
Won't be won't be done yet. So every year we get new growth that's from essentially building permits taken out by the, you know, by by residents around town. So that's what new growth is. And as you know, Prop two and a half allows for two and a half percent increase on existing properties plus new growth. And that's why it's shown this way because if if we had, for example, a whole new subdivision going in, that whole new subdivision would be supplemental to Prop two and a half. But we're built out, so all we get is, you know, new bathrooms or new new porches, there's whatever it is on houses.
Got it, and this would not include the new assessments yet either, that that's more for the following year? And it doesn't include the two fifty that the church is giving us?
Assessments have nothing to do with this, okay? Because it's like properties and it's how much you can assess the properties for. You know, we're now just over three billion dollars in our total assessments for tonight's tax assessment. So we can go up in that by one point four million dollars. The assessments just end up affecting the tax rate. So if every house doubles in value, the tax rate goes in half, but it does not affect that number at all. That's based on how much the assessed value is and how much you can go up by.
The two fifty though that was given to the town, I guess, is what is that factored into this initial budget?
Which two fifty?
The two fifty for the church that?
That doesn't hit for, first, that doesn't hit for another year or two.
Oh, okay. So you know, the meeting, you told us they were giving two fifty upfront, is that not?
That 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 if they did, that would, if they do that, it would be for mitigation of of traffic and it's not tax revenue.
Non-tax doesn't include as part of any of this?
Correct.
Okay.
And and the, you know, in talking with the building department, I I hear there's a lot of uh people who are putting additions on in in town, which is a good thing for our tax base. Uh, we want to encourage that. Uh, the the question I had Ian was, you know, it's it's nice to see that the 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 increase on health insurance for everybody, like at four percent. But I'm a little surprised by the increase in liability at seven point five or seven percent. And why is that going up so much?
Well, there's there's a multitude of factors. I think the most important factor that we need to know is that it's becoming more and more expensive, excuse me, becoming more and more expensive to insure due to what's called nuclear um, nuclear settlements. So I was looking into this actually today, and these are settlements of ten million dollars or more that a corporation, a government, a town is has to pay as a liability, as a litigation. People are becoming more and more litigious. It's it's seen across all industries that insurers need to expect more premiums and they need to look at their risk tolerance better. So that results in a higher liability insurance for the town on on the whole basis of we have increasing insurance rates.
So would that would vary, like if we had less lawsuits and so forth, then that would drop?
It's certainly something that we could discuss with Mia, but on on as a basis right now, I can't answer that.
If we if we had less lawsuits against us, it doesn't matter because we're in a pool. So we may be seen as less risky, but it's not really going to help our liability. Yeah, okay.
And in fact, liability insurance, each one percent increase is like eight grand, so it's not really even a, I mean, eight thousand to eight thousand, I don't want to, but it's not a major impact on our on our, you know, on our financial system, unlike retirement, my favorite thing, which is killing us.
All right. Uh, I remember getting, we had a little gift last year, our state aid increase was much higher than expected. What what did that come in at?
For this year?
Uh, no, for last year.
Well, current FY twenty four.
Current FY twenty four.
Is that what you're talking about?
Well, twenty twenty three, twenty, or twenty two, twenty three, what was our?
Twenty three, twenty four.
Twenty three, twenty four, yeah.
So net state aid came in at eight point five million. So I'm projecting for FY twenty five, that's going to go up to almost nine.
And what was the increase last year? I I know it was before your time, but it was higher than expected. It was like seven or something.
I'd have to, I'd have to get back to.
Not a quiz, I just, I don't know if you've looked at that. Um, so that that helped us out a lot in getting us to zero last year. Um, but I'm 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 glad we don't bank on that.
The the problem is, Josh, we don't find out the state aid until long after we prepare the budget. I mean, state aid, even though the governor always suggests something in February, we don't get the state aid until.
Well, I know as of as of tonight, I just heard that they released the statewide supplemental budget, so that should.
That's for the current budget year.
Correct.
For next year, who knows what's going to be.
But but that gives us a better indication of where we'll be.
Right.
All right. Any other questions from folks here or in Zoom?
I have a question for the people in the room, and that is because it's interesting, our shortfall is seven hundred seventeen thousand dollars and our increased OPEB contribution is seven hundred thousand dollars. Interesting, interesting how those things, you know, in the past, we've had to, I won't say forego, but but adjust our, you know, our recommended or policy-based OPEB contribution. I'd just like to hear what other people may think, especially the finance committee, about the town cutting back. I mean, OPEB's been the right thing to do, it is the right thing to do. But, you know, when you don't have enough money, something's got to give. Like I said, that's the only thing on here that's got any flexibility, from my perspective.
Um, yeah, so I don't actually. Yes, you are deferring future expenses by by not funding that. Um, I would be interested if the increase in interest rates has changed anything around what we need to do for retirement funding, if that's been in long enough to make a difference. Because one of the reasons the funding's been so miserable is because interest rates have been so low for so long. Um, but that's something we could we could talk with Ian about and and figure out if what the right amount for that is. But I'm assuming at some point, if we don't fund it and people have to get paid, that we'd have to find monies at that point in time.
Well, I mean, we fund OPEB now out of current revenue as opposed to out of our fund. It just postpones the pain as you as you indicate, right?
It's just postponing the pain, yeah, so you'd have to decide what pain you care about more right now.
Yeah, if you can't balance the budget.
So you're saying the finance committee would really be concerned about what kind of interest of rate of return we could get when we put that money into investment at this point in time?
I I I'm trying to, I haven't looked at the total retirement fund that we're paying into and and what the projections are and how and what our current percentage of funding is and how poor it is. But shifts in interest rate can change that dramatically as well. So I think that that's a question of like, well, maybe we can say we don't do it this year because interest rates went up. And so the, so I I'd need to know more information around that to have an opinion.
Yeah.
But we can definitely look into that.
I think it'd be helpful if the finance committee kind of dug into that a little bit, just to make a recommendation because it's it's a big ticket item, it's something that's been on our radar to fully fund. I mean, we have, last deficit was twenty two million or twenty four million dollars. So I mean, we got to put money into it. But if it if it comes down to level services for the town or cutting services and putting money into OPEB, my personal vote is to level servicing, cut a little bit from OPEB. But that may not be other people's, and that's why I'm trying to get, understand what other people are doing.
Who does the calculation for how funded we are?
An outside firm.
Because it's based on actuarial tables and so on and so on, yeah. So I do, I wonder, that's a great question, is with, we don't want to bank on having five percent interest rates forever, but I do wonder if just where we are now, that gives us a tick up and we can take a year off where we need to. I I generally, I I, when budgeting, we have to think of the long term, and I I agree with you. I wouldn't want to cut something for this, but I also don't want to dump it on future generations. So it's a, it's a tough thing every year to think about, but.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll take that away and talk about that at our next meeting and do some research on it.
Sure. Okay, any other comments on the budget, the budget process or? First, this is the first part of a uh, a dig in until the end of the year, until May, right? June. So the other thing is we have all received a detailed study, the final report uh for the IT. And we're going to look at that as a joint committee because it falls under the umbrella of the school department. And uh, so do we have someone going to?
We do, they are coming. Um, this was a lot quicker of a budget discussion than I anticipated, so they are on their way here.
Are we adopting the calendar tonight? Is that the idea?
I think you have to adopt it, did you?
I don't know, it says adopted December fourth, twenty twenty three.
You usually vote on it, yeah.
I don't think we've ever, we haven't changed it since February. All right, um, so I'm not quite sure if we should, we should wait for them to do their presentation or should we? I guess, I don't know if we should have any discussion prior to them being here. But then I hate to go into our regular business. And sort of keep your folks here. So I don't know, do you guys, any any opinion from?
Do you require a minute just to vote the budget calendar, is that what you're saying?
That's what I was wondering.
I was trying to fill time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, why don't we open the budget calendar then? I I move we adopt the budget calendar.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
You have to do a roll call.
Okay.
Yeah, so Mr. Lukisa?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Himabatay?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Zwerko?
Yeah.
Okay, great. It sounds like our presenter is here. So here's a new, I'm popping one. Okay, welcome.
And do you want me to pop up? I can give my.
So we've uh, we've all reviewed the final report and we're hoping you can bring us up to to date and.
So I'm happy to introduce introduce this, I'll let them get settled. Uh, so just to remind everyone, uh, the IT study was done through a community compact best practice grant to look at our IT operation. Started, um, I don't remember exactly when we started this, I don't know, last spring, I think. And um, brought in the UMass Boston Collins Center for Public Management. Uh, and here with me tonight is Dick Daly from the Collins Center and Tom Tedford from the Collins Center. They spent a lot of time meeting with departments, touring our facilities, interviewing staff, uh, hearing about what's working, what's not working. Uh, they inventoried what we have for hardware, for software, and really gave us a roadmap uh for our current IT configuration. Um, along this time, we saw some staffing changes as well, so we had to navigate through that. Um, and then what you see here with you tonight is a final report was released a couple of weeks ago. And um, on your desks when you came in is an executive summary prepared by the town's new um, uh, IT director, Antonio Pagan, who's also with us here tonight as well. For many of you who have not met him, he's to the right of Marty.
Quick shout out to Antonio, who joined us in, I guess it was August?
August.
August, uh, this is his first public meeting, I think, with us, so.
It is.
Uh, Antonio um has has hit the ground sprinting and he is someone who sees big pictures. He's an incredible project manager, uh, but also understands the the complicated details of the world of technology. So we're grateful that Antonio has joined the team, he's been a great addition. And I know he has rolled up his sleeves to unpack the study and consider how we can implement it, so appreciate the chance to introduce Antonio Pagan.
Thank you.
Another great thing about Antonio is he knows both the school and municipal side of government, so that's huge. Congratulations on hiring you guys.
Great, so we have Tom and Dick here to walk us through the final report.
Yeah.
All right. Firstly, I wanted to thank Lynn, Marty and and Tom Azza for the great help they did helping us with this process, which takes time. The other, the other thing is that IT has gone through a significant period of adjustment in the last two years. Uh, the explosion of technology in the schools, uh, the demand to go remote, both the schools and the town, um, an explosion of the cloud as alternatives and options for towns and cities. Explosion of cameras, police, personal cars around the facilities. All these things have happened. So it's been a, and the other thing is uh, the towns having to go remote. The citizens don't want to go in the town hall, they want to do things remotely. That's not going away, they want that to continue, they don't want to have to come in the town hall. So probably the biggest change in IT in the last twenty years has been the last two years. Things that were stalled and moved, moved because they had to. So it's a, it's a different world, yeah. So um, we brought our background in there. Tom, why don't you go ahead and start? This is kind of a dual uh, dual kind of study. One, it was a traditional IT review, plus it was a look at the HR payroll functions, of which Tom is heavily experienced. Uh, so Tom, go ahead.
Sure, um, one other thing I want to say is thank you not only for getting the study going, but also coordinating all the interviews we had to do, because we met with every department, members from every school. So it was really a lot to cover and it went very smooth. One of the key findings in the HR department is the utilization of technology or lack of. In-house, there is the Munis HR system. But Long Meadow has kind of stayed with a legacy product, which was built by a consultant years ago. And all those things can be integrated into the Munis platform, which is something that we're working on now. There also is very little separation between the town and the schools because it's such a small community. My most recent community that I worked in was Springfield, so it's much bigger. That's why I refer to this as small, and this is small in a good way. Because another thing I learned was the department heads, you have such high quality department heads throughout the town. It's really incredible to have so many good, qualified, nice and intelligent people. But back to the HR findings, another finding was time and attendance is really decentralized. Now, at the police and fire department, there's scheduling software, those are about twenty four seven operations. And they each maintain software, which keeps track of who's on staff, what hours they work, what have you. But it becomes a paper product to get it into the payroll system, which, this is also something we're working on now, to clean this up, automate it more, have less manual touching of the data. Another finding is the accrual balances are not listed on the pay stubs. Well, accruals are actually maintained in the departments by the different department heads. So keeping track of sick time, vacation time, the Munis software has the ability to track that. It just takes building, setting it up, building it out, and utilizing it. Uh, so these are things that, again, are in the works to be changed. I really think that's the key part of the HR payroll pieces.
All right. I was expecting a long buzz.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll look at the IT recommendations, which Tom and I both did. And I'll take part of it. Tom will cover some, because he covered public safety, which he has more experience. First thing is, there's no clear strategy or plan for initiatives for IT. You know, how do you deal with that type of thing? IT has limited resources, and they can have tremendous demands. And if you ask the IT director as alone to decide that I'm going to implement a system in X department to the detriment of other departments, he doesn't have the perspective. So, we're recommending creating a steering committee to look at the plan and prioritize activities and initiatives for the, for the town. That way, you have multiple people looking at the full picture. And secondly, you don't have the situation where one department presses for initiatives and others don't. I've been in some towns where the difference between departments was incredible. One department stayed in the yard, other departments don't age. Unbelievable. Because that department pressed for it when they really should have dealt with the other department. They were really needed help. Anyway, so, the idea is to create a steering committee and develop a plan, and the plan should be probably three years. Even five years is too far today. You can't predict it, what's happening with technology. The second item there is documentation. What I, what we normally do is, we come in and we ask for all background information. I asked for inventory of all the assets, and for the town, there wasn't any. No inventory of what assets existed. For the schools, there was an inventory, but it was incomplete. Different format for different things. Some of them didn't even contain data purchase. So, you need that to determine and plan of when things are reaching their, you know, normal end of life type of thing. So, we need to do that. Next thing, that's a small point, which is, the town could probably benefit by having some software that handles the, the boards and commission appointments, you know, when they end, when they need to be reappointed, you know, all that type of thing. Very inexpensive software, can do a lot for your revenues and spreadsheets. The data center server room. Right now, the center is in the high school basement. It's subject to flooding, water intrusion. It's not secure. I walk right in. And it has a kind of temporary portable air conditioning unit. So, we're suggesting, recommending moving it to a new building, the DPW facility. There's room there. It's secure. It is, it's got a, the building has a full backup system, so, you know, that's a better place for it and build a data center there. There's two rooms. A smaller room actually would do fine. There's opportunities for existing software. Right now, you have a building department that has a licensing and permitting software, good decent software, but they are the only one using it. We recommend extending that for use into other regulatory departments or licensing departments, such as planning, such as town clerk type of thing, such as health. The whole idea is to have all the applications, the, any violations, everything in one place under a parcel, so I can look in one spot and see all the activity, rather than it's in different departments type of thing right now. Can also aid enforcement, where inspector goes out and notices that, let's say, the health inspector notices, gee, they're doing some electrical modifications here. I wonder if they have, if they have a permit? Well, if they don't, I can look it up on my tablet type of thing. So, want it all in one spot, accessible by everybody, people can apply online with that software, but it's all dedicated to the parcel-based information, rather than spread across all different departments in the town. The other area is the recreation and parks department has a software product that can be used for other departments, such as council and aging or the library, that provides programs, that conducts programs. You can enroll people, you can collect money, they can, they can, you know, they can enroll online, similar type functions. Why not extend that out there? You already own it. Simple, simple change, really improvement in our operation. They have the same type things going on. Tom, talk about the public safety.
Sure. One other thing was the Munis upgrade, but that just happened in October, so.
Okay.
That is a positive step, since the report was completed. On the IT side, for police and fire, you have people in both departments that are supporting the technology in those departments, which is great, but sometimes they need IT help, especially when it comes to cameras. There are cameras throughout the town, traffic cams, dash cams, cams throughout the, cameras throughout the police department, whether it's an interrogation room, the back of the property for the building, which is their parking lot, the front door. Everything needs to be secure, and they need to have clean recordings and backups in case they ever need it. Fire also has the need for some security, but more their, their applications are more for calls and reporting to the state, just like the police have to in their own, in their own ways.
Okay. I skipped over one. Currently, two big initiatives. One is upgrading Munis to the latest version, which you're way behind, which happened in October. And secondly, which also needs some training, because a lot of people have joined the town after the initial implementation, they need to be brought to speed. The other one is laser, document, and that particular project needs good project management. And Antonio will.
Does that happen?
Yeah. Because it's a, it's a tremendous technology, but not done right, you will spend all the time and not get the end results. So, really have to manage that project tightly. Phone systems. Unique reaction from the departments. If they wanted to put a phone message on their own phone, or a phone message, let's say, on the council and aging that, you know, inclement whether, you know, it's closed down, or this particular program is not going to go today, they would have to go to IT to get that done. So, I think we need to get to the point where train them so they can use it. And they don't need to go, and IT, you know, would take days to do it or something, you know, and they, they want to be able to do that themselves, and that's certainly a normal expectation, yeah. So, need to look at those voice systems. All right. Town does not have a formal emergency recovery plan and plan to deal with cybersecurity threats. Now, you have a backup system. You back up tightly to a server from this building to town hall. But there's nothing written down. There's no, we'd like to see that documented. What is the process and procedure to that? The other suggestion is, maybe look at the cloud for a third, maybe periodically go out and back up way off-site, rather than just down the road type of thing, right? And those abilities are quite easy to get involved in. Cybersecurity is, I know the, the state had a offering, which the town took advantage of, and just to take those recommendations and proceed, because you've got to, I mean, they are attacking towns and cities. I mean, it's just, every week, I see another one show up type of thing, because they're more vulnerable. You know, the companies, the commercial companies have already had this happen, and they've been burned, but the.
On the bright side, they've been going after the bigger communities, so fingers crossed.
Now, they've gotten, now, they've gotten, now, they've gotten out small ones, too. And the demands are significant, really. I mean, the worst being Baltimore, they literally shut that city down.
When I was at the city of Springfield, we, during the COVID, we were working remotely, and they were actually targeted by a cyber attack. It went through the school department, and I used to be online at seven o'clock in the morning, and I noticed something weird. I couldn't access a database that I normally access daily. And so, I reached out to the IT director. I said, "Did we get attacked last night?" He said, "No, we lost power in certain servers, and we're bringing them up." I said, "Don't bring them up yet. Just look, check this out." And sure enough, they shut everything down. They only missed school for one day, but it was just a lucky coincidence that I happened to look.
So, that's an important thing. Move forward on, yeah. In talking with the IT staff, I got, you know, feedback that there was, you know, the policies were enforced in an inconsistent manner, work rules, attendance, whatever, snow days, all types of thing like that. And, you know, it comes down to, you really need a good, strong leader in the department to get that consistent policy and work, work, work rules going together. That will solve that. I think that'll go, Antonio will take care of that in no time. The last one, and probably the biggest, but IT support not meeting the needs of municipal departments. I asked every department head, what, what's your reaction to support from IT? And I got universally two answers, non-responsive or nonexistent. They were very, very, so, it's been, it's been a heavy educational focus. It sits right now in, in the, or it did sit in the school departments. An unusual organizational approach. I've done, I've been studies in 20 towns, and I'm not aware of any other that did it like that. It may be a unique way of managing it. So, we're saying, recommend that it reports to the town manager with a, with a dotted line to the superintendent. We feel the town manager has a wider perspective on all the town activities. It was, the worst part, I think, was the limited application support. There was, there was no one on the, on the staff that was supporting Munis or any of the other municipal, you know, assessing and all the other packages that are out, the systems are out there, no one doing that type of thing. So, the other things we look at, we, we recommend moving the department to the relocated town hall when that comes about. Take a look at that technology integration specialist position, which is a pure educational position. Maybe that doesn't belong in the IT department, maybe, maybe not. Take a look at that, but that's a pure curriculum-based job. We recognize that student information systems staff person is 100% and should continue to be 100% devoted to that. That is a big system and needs constant payments to keep it going, you know? Don't, don't touch that. In the interim, we're, we're saying that to build a more robust support structure in the short term, either with consultants or with additional staff, work on helping support with municipal application systems, right? Increase the use of remote sort facilities. They have the software, they're starting to use that, increase that. By that, I mean, you don't have to physically, if someone has a problem with their desktop, you don't have to physically drive to that school or that department and, and service the problem. You can actually look in to see what's happening on that desktop remotely. So, use that software. You can save travel time and be a lot more responsive. The other thing I didn't see was, we need some metrics against the plan, or on time, uptime, responsiveness in terms of how many calls I get and how quickly I respond to those calls. And that should be reported by the director monthly with a, to the town manager and a carbon copy to Marty. And lastly, it's a small department. Both the director and the assistant director should be considered workers. They're working supervisors. The only way you can do that with a, with a department of this size. So, that's it? Questions? Was that it?
I wonder, in order to land on this, or the boards, I wonder if it'd be helpful to hear from Antonio. He's sort of had an opportunity. This has been sort of job one for him, is to sort of unpack this study and, and implement what he can and set priorities for the other items. So, I wonder, just to kind of get a status report on where we are, because the, Tom and Dick were with us, probably it was in the spring of '23, so.
It's been a few months, right?
Yeah, it's been, it's been a while since, since they interviewed our staff and gathered informations, but Antonio's had a good chance to unpack it. informations, but Antonio's had a good chance to unpack it, and there's a small report that he's laid in front of you and is also in your meeting packets, I think, that it might be helpful to have Antonio just give you an overview where he sees things, where he's made some progress, and what work is still in front of us. So would that be helpful at this point? Or would you rather dive into questions?
Please, Antonio.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you for having me here. As Marty mentioned, I've been here for a few months now, and obviously it's, for me, it's very useful actually coming into...
You're not done?
Into the municipality.
I told you you're back.
Into the municipality, and I find, you know, a study just completed, because that will give us a roadmap to basically just put together a plan for not only addressing these issues, but also...
The future.
For the future. And that is a huge advantage, and I thank you, the town, for thinking about this and for Marty and the town manager to work on hiring calling center. I actually have experienced working with Dick before for a few years, and we have collaborated over the years on other initiatives. So definitely, I respect the way it was done. It was very thorough, and having those interviews with staff, the way they did it is the best way to get the information correct. That said, I, you know, when I started, I did exactly the same. I just met with every department head and had conversations with them, trying to update information to today and see how things are. So I basically confirmed most of the things that they put on the study, and I just want to approach this in a way that, you know, I try to be an opportunistic planner, so I see what opportunities are there to work together with different options. If we go by one of, each one of these issues individually, it's going to take three, four years to go through all of them. But there's many of them that can work together, so we are, we're already working on some resolutions. We are taking a holistic view, how to approach this, and even think about, you know, what all the things are in the future, and we need to approach as we go. So I've been lucky enough to, you know, have Tom Massa helping me understand the financial in the town, because every municipality, every community has different ways of dealing with finances. So Tom has helped understanding how things are done here and what is the cycle and how we can take advantage of funding in different ways, and at the same time, knowing how the state works with funding. So I've been also working on that side, trying to get more funding for being able to tackle all these issues here. So it, I'm not going to repeat what is on the report, but basically, I really want to say that we are already working on many initiatives here. I have, in my opinion, there are two main categories that are critical, which one is infrastructure, and the other one is cybersecurity. And, you know, I know that Dick has mentioned, and Tom has mentioned, you know, how important is this, but for me, it's even more important than what you heard from them. The only thing is, I'm not going to talk about, about security, because I normally don't share any details of security. It's just, I just say, there is a concern, and, you know, the team is working on that. We already joined an organization called MS Isaac, which is funded by the Homeland Security, and they are actually helping us to identify other issues that are not here, but could be. And then working with other organizations to find the support that is needed, as recommended by, by Dick, is not something that we can do alone. We need to work with many organizations to do this. And I'm already in conversation with, with several organizations, so we are working on that. The head end room, we already ordered the equipment, and we are working on scheduling the move as soon as possible, probably in a couple of months it will be done completely. But yeah, you know, we're taking advantage of some funding that was available, and we're moving forward with that, because as I say, it's a key piece of how to work. But I have to say that I don't sleep very well, thinking that one day it would be a flood and we would not have any connectivity for several weeks, and that is what could happen. So we are definitely aware of how critical are some of the issues here. Other are a little bit more manageable, and we are also working on how to approach those. Instead of HR, I agree completely with Tom that there's a lot of opportunities of improving just by consolidating. I think that you already started to work with HR, and, you know, we are supporting all the departments, and specifically HR, I think there's, there's a lot of work to be done there, but I think that it would be a matter of maybe three months, four months for us to be able to tackle that one, that is, is a cluster of initiatives, but they are all related, so I think it's, and I have experience working on migration of software titles, so it's not, not something that, that we cannot do, do here. One main concern that I think that I have heard even outside of the study is how the municipal departments are worried about their support, you know, how we are supporting them. I think that, I would say, in the last few conversations I have had, public safety, it feels very comfortable, because we are supporting them a lot more, and that even before I came here, it was improving. I think it's much better. On the phone system, we already have conversation with Tom and the provider to find solutions on how to make it more user-friendly. System, one of the issues that we have with the system is, the system is cloud-based, which is great, but the other thing is, any, any configuration or modification has to be done through a ticket with a combat. So it's not that we have the capacity to make the changes, we have to create a ticket. And that makes things a lot more harder. So there is no, there's, there's a lot of things to be done there, and, you know, we have many options, but we are already addressing that. We are in conversation with, with the vendor, and the vendor knows that there's concerns about it. There is a concept, a conceptual issue here, which is, and this is something that is cultural, I think, is IT is, is a very critical function of any organization, and we have very good department heads, and sometimes that is a bad combination, because people think that because they are very good managers, they can deal with IT. And that is, that's not a good formula, and that, this is my experience. You know, we are educating people and saying, "Okay, you have all the knowledge that you have, and I respect what you know about your job, but I need to be able to make decisions on IT." So we are working more and more. I think that department heads are really receptive about this. Maybe they, they feel comfortable in doing it, and they are basically just relying on us, but, but I know that in the past was not like that. People would go out there and make their own purchasing, their own procurement decisions, and I actually had a very good conversation with our procurement officer, and so he understands that anything on IT needs to pass through, through our, our office, our department. So that is something that we're hurt, having more, you know, project management on anything that is done. The munis upgrade is a very good example of how IT actually took ownership of the project from the beginning and, or from the end. And we are already, you know, in the last phase of deployment, in the sense of, you know, just cleaning up some issues that happened after the migration, and, you know, we are basically leading that conversation. And laserfish, there was a little bit of project management during the upgrade, but we still have a lot of work to do on getting it working with training, as Dick mentioned. So those are examples, things that we are already working is, I'm not going to be, you know, too optimistic. This is going to take several years to go through. Is, we're talking over a dozen recommendations, all of them are very important. So this is going to take several years to do. My, you know, my priorities, as you can read there, is to move ahead with the IT, either, I'm not sure if we have got an IT committee or any other body. So we have a few people that represents different sections of the municipality and the community, and then we work together to start basically just putting out some documentation on policies, procedures, and priorities, how, how to make it, how to make the decision processing more easy for everyone, and more, better documented. But that is what I can say right now, is it's been really a few weeks, and it's been a lot of, it's been a lot of work. But, but I think that we are prepared to tackle this and, and work. I would suggest that eventually, maybe within six months or a year, come back and, and have a more thorough report on, on the solutions. This is very preliminary, don't take this as a, as a final report, this is not.
Work in progress.
And one thing I forgot to mention was, with that committee, the town is in a very limited use of geographic information systems. They are wonderful, wonderful technology, but I think that same committee should look at that, as opposed to several individual departments decide to pursue it, and it ends up being a mess. It needs to be coordinated. It's a great tool. Towns do it in a variety of ways. Towns invest in it in to a limited or a great extent. An example being, I did a study in Falmouth. They had 250 layers of GAS, massive. They had everything plotted, all the elm trees, all the moorings, all the, everything. They were the, they were beyond the pale type of thing. But you're early on, but I think you need to look at it as a total entity, as opposed to next department. You don't have an engineering department to drive it, so we need to look at it as a very useful tool for a lot of departments, you know.
Okay. Well, thank you, Antonio, for your, your comments, your insight. It sounds like you're willing to do the work. It sounds like there's a lot of work to do. I appreciate that. We thank you for the report. This brought a lot of things to light for me, and I think the biggest thing is, it's like there's this paradigm shift that, I was a little surprised when I read the, the report. So I look at things like paradigm shifts, like astronomy, when they developed the microscope, that changed it completely. Biology, when they developed the microscope, or I'm sorry, the telescope for astronomy, astronomy, the microscope for biology, the computer for social sciences and municipal government and so forth. Then you can see how the role the computer is going to be playing in the future is pretty significant. And as we move forward on this, I think it's just important that we look at, you know, where some of these decisions lie that we're talking about. And, you know, it came, it jumped out to me clearly, that some of these decisions don't rely on the select board, you know. They rely on our town manager, our superintendent, our CFO, that those are the folks who really are in the best position to make some of the decisions about databases and materials and what, what firewall should be put in what places to protect workers and so forth, and protect the town's interests. And, and some things need to be negotiated, like, you know, we, it took a long time to negotiate that we would have locators on vehicles for DPS, or for the DPW, that, you know, that was a negotiation that had to be done with the union. And so as I look at this list, it covers a lot of territory. And so as we approach it, I don't want to sort of move quickly to decisions that would undermine our town manager, our superintendent, our CFO. That's my first reaction to this. I don't know what other folks have to say. Yeah?
Tom, thanks. I, I'm looking around the room, and I'm going to date myself here, but I'm the only one in the room. I, along with, at the time, was Jennifer Jester, who was the chair of the school committee, we wrote the MOU. And one of the things that, that it did is it turned the IT department into a, under the school department, as proceeds, our superintendent, town manager, everybody like that. And I think it's important to explain why it was done and why I think it's time to reconsider that, and that's one of the things that's in this recommendation. It was done because, at the time, IT and computer systems were accelerating exponentially in school use, and in municipal government, we were using word processors and maybe Excel spreadsheets. The police didn't have, you know, computers in their vehicles, fire department dispatch wasn't in that. Our phone system was literally an old-fashioned phone system, and for a variety of reasons, it made a lot of sense to go where the growth was. You know, schools were buying literally hundreds, if not thousands, of, at the time, computers and workbooks, and had tremendous expansion. And if I look at what's happening, it appears, and I should just comment, as part of that MOU, if people look at it, it did require the creation of a steering committee. It never happened, because nobody made it happen. And so the, the understanding was that this group needed to have input from citizens, from town-side employees or department heads and school department heads, but it didn't happen. And for a couple of years, kind of gave it, you know, lip service at best, and then just kind of let it fall apart. But that's part of the, the issue that we had. And so if we look at where we are now, that growth in, in computers and IT use has somewhat flip-flopped, that schools are, and I'm not saying they're not growing, but schools are growing, but they, they matured their growth. And municipal government, especially things like public safety, where now computers become critical, and, and other areas have, we're almost beyond the point where they're, they're moving up. We've, we've progressed and left them behind. And I think, you know, if, if we want to be responsive as, as leaders of the community to where the systems are going now, we, we really ought to take a look at saying, "Okay, we were way over here, we shifted way over here, it's time to move this back." Because I think what Dick said and Antonio's heard is, and I've heard and probably everybody here has heard, is that, you know, when the Parks and Rec Department or, you know, the Police Department call up the IT, it's kind of a wing and a prayer, are they going to get some assistance, and when are they going to? Because the IT, and this is no fault of the IT department, they, they were located in the schools, centered in the schools, and focused on the school system, and we've really done a disservice to the town side. And so I look at the recommendations, and to me, one of the critical ones is getting that focus back on helping to run town government and the computer systems and town government. The inefficiencies that, that this study has shown, everything from munis to software systems that aren't shared and things like that, are things that our department heads just can't see in a good centralized IT group that's now working for the town would. And so I, I appreciate the, the recommendations here. I hope, you know, people understand why we did what we did 13 years ago. It was the right decision now, but it's then, but it's not the right decision now, in my opinion, to have the IT department being focused so heavily on the schools relative to municipal government. And that's primarily because of where the growth, where the activity, where the opportunity is, and also, you have to say, and we all know this, the kids are really good, and the teachers are really good at doing the IT on their own, and for the most part, the municipal offices aren't that good. And so, you know, it takes a lot less handholding now in the schools than it probably did 12 years ago, and it takes a lot more handholding in municipal government now than it did 12 years ago. And so that's kind of my pitch for supporting this major recommendation. And so that's kind of my pitch for supporting this major recommendation, which is to move the IT group.
I think Mark, but Marty still will be his biggest customer.
Without a doubt, it's just the number of users. There's thousands of users there.
He's got, you know, there's 3,000 devices in the, in the, and 2,700 of them are, you know, with laptops, tablets.
But the devices don't, you know, don't mean activity. When you've got, you know, 3,000 devices and they're all using, you know, 20 software systems, but then you've got a, a, literally a critical factor in our public safety or some of our, our other departments, or payroll and HR, I think, you know, it's, it's not just quantity, but it's quality or importance. But I agree with you that we're not, we're not suggesting the schools go away. They won't.
I, I mean, I, there's so much value to this report, and I'm, I'm really pleased that we did. I want to be careful about suggesting that we've sort of matured or plateaued. In fact, it does, in my, I've been here, this is now my eighth year, I'd say the last year, three years, I've seen more acceleration in the use of technology than I did in my first five. You know, when we, where four years ago, we weren't distributing devices to students, now 2,800 students have a device, and that's a lot for these folks to manage.
The pandemic happened.
And I, yeah, and the other thing I want to, you know, I think we also have to be mindful of when, we have to be mindful of what the survey, what the report produced, we also think about when we were asking these questions. It was at a time when we were in, there was some significant transition. We're fortunate now that we have Antonio as a great project director in place, and Gary Blanchard as the assistant director of technology. Those are two positions that were completely in flux at a time, you know, when, when, when the study was undertaken. So I just want to be careful about, I want, you know, I think what I've heard from Antonio is we just want to prioritize the projects that are identified in, from this report, because there's already a lot of traction underway, and we're already making a lot of headway on the recommendations that Dick and Tom presented to us. So I think that's, I mean, that, I, I'd love to have us continue to focus on the, the projects that are in front of us, to help us, you know, support teachers and support town employees and support students.
Mark, one other thing that's happened too. 12 years ago, the software available to small towns at a price they could afford was very limited. Big cities could do it, you know, like take licensing and permitting, it was really one solution. It was incredibly expensive. And now there's all kinds of solutions, and it's in the cloud, you know, and it's just easy. So the solutions coming to municipal government are much enhanced over that time period. The MOU also had metrics in it, which were never followed either too, which you, you know, look at, in other words, how long it took to satisfy and support, that was never adhered to either.
Yes.
And I think from a financial basis, reporting wise, I guess I am confused why it's under the school department as it supports the whole town. But really, I think the IT financials should all be bundled together as a town, because it, it does become substantial, and if you have it in every single different group, you're going to end up with a lot of duplicate costs and not be aware of it. From a financial basis, it seems in a minimum, that should be agreed on at a town level and understood at a town level, separate from any of the additional town budgets for the different areas. Because you can spend a lot of money on IT and not even know you're doing it, if it's spread across a lot of places.
Yes.
Which was great that Antonio brought that to the attention of the procurement department.
I was in one small town where the IT budget was zero, is buried in, was buried in 20 different holes, you know? So you didn't, you don't know what you're spending on it. That's the worst part, yeah.
Yes, Josh?
If I could just put my plea on to one project. Last week, Fidelity National Title Company got cyber attacked, they had a ransomware, it threw my industry into chaos for a bit, and they're a massive company, and I, God knows how much I spent on IT. I'm glad it keeps you up at night, because that's, that's one of the things that if we got locked down, people would start noticing pretty quick, and a lot of core functions of the town would go down. So I really urge you to, I know we have it, it's, the list has not started on there, but I hope we can make some headway on that, because that's, that's a really important thing that would be really, really noticeable and hurt a lot of people in town if we had an issue. But I'm glad we have a plan, and I'm really glad to hear this report.
Dan has a standard answer.
Yes, Dan's work, I see your hand up. If you want to unmute yourself. Yeah, we can't see you, but we hear you. Go ahead.
All right, I'm just going on video here. No, I, I definitely, I certainly agree with what Josh had said, and really appreciate the, the thorough report. For the past eight years, I spent my career in cybersecurity, application security, software security, and I'm sitting here right now in Florida at my company event, which is all about cybersecurity. So when I saw this report, it was really exciting to me, and I think, you know, to Josh's point, this should be a priority, cybersecurity from day one, really, and right now. So I appreciate Antonio's recognition of that, and also Antonio not disclosing exactly kind of what we're doing as well. Certainly, that's important. To Mark, to Mark's point earlier, you know, this was, I think, 13 years ago, which again is, you know, a few of us are new on the board, and this is just once again another issue that, that we're seeing that has been neglected for over 10 years. So I'm glad to see that the, the town is looking into this, that the board is looking into this. 13 years ago, we should have, on an annual basis, every six months, looked at, you know, what we were doing, how can we improve, how things are shifting across the town, with the needs of public safety, with police and fire, and the demands they're having with IT. Those are things that we've left, we've neglected for over 10 years. And right now, I'm glad to see that we're actually going to address these important issues for the, the town, because we've seen issues that have happened at our parks, due to lack of cameras, things like that. So we need to continue to embrace technology, public safety, and it's a public safety issue when we look at cybersecurity and the threat that it poses to our town. So really appreciate everyone, you know, bringing this to light after so many years. I think it's really important, and I think the town does need to continue to embrace technology, but also look at the security aspect as well. So again, I thank everyone's efforts on this report. Antonio, it sounds like you're doing a good job as well. And the final thing that I would say is, we need to continue to look at consolidation as well, that you just talked about a little bit earlier. So appreciate everyone's attention and due diligence to this important issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mary has a question.
Yes.
So the use of instructional technology has really increased since the pandemic, of course, in schools. And I just was wondering if you had any findings related to student data and privacy around student data as it relates to FERPA or any of, any of that, especially because, you know, teachers are using websites and apps. I don't know that there's a vetting process for that, or what kind of information goes into those platforms.
Yeah, we didn't really look at that piece of it. Can you have a new person around student records? I do not recall her name.
Thomas, Thomas Barrow.
Okay.
I guess I, at the end of your report, you mentioned the possibility, or the suggestion that there was an educational side, like a technology coordinator, you didn't use that phrase, but some of the issues I think that the schools face are very different than the issues that the town faces. And so even the management of Chromebooks, intentional breakage of, of, you know, and how to manage that, how to replace devices, how to repair them, those are really school specific issues.
Well, I think the benefit of Antonio is he has that background.
Yeah.
And has dealt with that situation.
So when I think about that, we are in a financial meeting, I'm just pointing out to all of you that there are some needs that are very specific to the school. So when we talk about the needs to increase some of these operational systems on the town side, there are probably some, some considerations on the school side that didn't show up in this report, is what I'm saying. Like specifically student privacy, that's an issue in a lot of districts where apps are blocked, or, you know, teachers are not allowed to create classes within programs that might have a free version or something like that, because there's a lot of legality around student data. And so it doesn't sound like we have a system in place to regulate where student data is going.
Yeah, our, our focus was on the municipal type of thing, and the organization of IT. What the, the only somewhat deep dive is HR and payroll, so, you know? Antonio has experience in the school department, he actually comes from a educational background and prior to that type of thing, so.
I'm just bringing it up because we aren't going to be talking about finances, and it just hasn't been brought up. So I just want to say that there are some considerations when we're thinking about positions and budget for the schools that may not have come within this report, to your point.
Yeah.
Okay.
May I, I just want to assure you that, that we are, we are very aware of that, and before my times, the, the school district joined a consortium.
Yes.
That basically forced us to ensure that the data privacy is, is taken care of before we adopt any, any app or website. And I've been conversa, having conversations with, you know, school district leaders about, you know, enforcing the use of only validated apps, and that is something that definitely, and we are taking other measures, and we have other tools that we are using for, for ensuring that. We are not 100% good, I don't think everybody, anyone is 100%. Doesn't matter how much money we spend on, on security, but we are trying our best with the resources we have, and we are, we're going to continue. It's going to be definitely an impact on the finances, definitely. We, we need to implement new tools and new measures that are going to cost money, definitely.
JV?
Yeah, just tagging on to, I'm just listening to, thank you, by the way, I think this is fabulous. I guess my only concern in listening to everybody here, my, my biggest concern is a couple of things. Number one, the creation of an IT committee with appropriate stakeholders is yellow, that should be red, because that group is going to prioritize who's working on what, what is the priority. So I come to you with five new projects, my five projects is DPW, they're the best. Like, why aren't you doing mine? Why aren't you doing mine? Somebody's got to prioritize those. This feels very much like the park and rec process in Long Meadow. It's like whoever speaks the loudest gets the most, nobody's connected. If we're not connected on this, we're going to blow money like crazy, because I think if you went around this table right now, and you could hear it, like, if you went around the table, we would all come up with different priorities on here. Your, and I, I agree with you, Antonio, the, the ones that you're working on from an IT standpoint, 100% priority, but my initial thing on here is not your priorities. I mean, it was the first thing that Tom said, and the fact, I believe you made a statement, the payroll process is conducted without appropriate accounting practices, that jumps to the top of my list, from everyone, right? It doesn't jump to my IT list, because he's an IT guy, but I hear that and I go, what? And I, it was my initial thought in my head, who's prioritizing this? That committee is the one supposed to prioritize this, so I have to put it as yellow at the bottom of this page. How do you know what you're supposed to be working on if this isn't being prioritized? Who's prioritizing? You got to go back to process, or you're never going to get anywhere, you'll be in the same spot we are with parks and recs, where nobody knows, because there's 100 different people going in 100 different directions. IT, especially big company IT, I know this is a small town, but big company IT, you let this run rampant, and nobody's, nobody's holding it. Like, who's the, who's the, you know, chief person, the CTO or whatever officer? If you're letting them run rampant like this, you're below money left and right. I don't like how we're prioritizing this right now, it's my two cents. And it's kind of just a tag on what Mary said, is who's, who's speaking on behalf of the schools, I'm assuming, but, but who's speaking? Who's, who's the one voicing where we're going here?
That's that committee.
Because we'll be back, yeah, but you can't, you can't start working on things until you have a committee telling you what to work on.
Right.
So you already started working on things, my priority isn't being worked on, in my, in my viewpoint, right? One lens, this whole thing, we go around the table, everybody else has a different one, I would stop quick, create your committee, create your priorities before you get too far along again.
Yeah, but I guess in response to that, I, I didn't understand the committee, because if there's not a budget tied to it, the committee's kind of pointless.
Yeah, we have a lot of pointless committees.
I know, but I know, yes, I see that one, but that's not the point. The, the point of the whole thing is that if you don't have a centralized way to think about how you're funding it, how do you, how do you make the decisions about where you put the resources to?
He does it alone.
I know, and so it needs to happen, but we don't really have a, a way to say, this is how much money we want to spend on this, and this is how we want to go across it. So it's just as we go through that, if you.
He does it now. Like, if you, if you're spending your money in your budget, who, who tells you, yeah, go for it or not?
Right now? Yep.
Conversations between town manager and, and with input from departments.
So that's where I think you need to form, my opinion, this is just me, but my opinion, you need to form the committee, because I, I don't think, if I was a CFO or whatever this town, I'm, I'm making a big deal about a couple of the things on here that maybe aren't important from an IT perspective, but they are from a financial. You're basically telling me that we're paying people and we're not even sure why we're paying them, is what that statement essentially is. It may not be, but it.
Well, you're paying people.
But you can't account for the time that those people.
Not necessarily for like vacation sick, that kind of stuff?
Sure.
Deductions, do you know if you're getting, I forget what the co-pay is for health insurance, is it 15%? 25%?
You mean the split?
Yeah.
30.
30? Okay. So you want to make sure 30% is coming out of my paycheck for the health insurance? Who's going to balance reconcile to the bill? That's the concern I run up.
That's important, so if you're the accountant, you know, it's, it's pretty important.
I agree.
So I would just say that it should be yellow, that's my thing. I don't know who it's supposed to be in this town, but whoever's going to be prioritizing, I'm assuming it's not just Antonio.
It's not me.
So just to jump off that, just a couple of quick things, just so people aren't panicked as we close this out. A lot of that purchasing has happened through the IT department, so it has been a consolidated purchasing, and it's been that way because the entire IT budget rests within the schools. So when the town clerk needs new dog license software, that's coming through the school budget. When it cut, when public safety needs an upgrade in their IMC system, and we have to pay for it, just a vague example there, comes through the school department budget, which is one of the odd things that I encountered when I got here, because that's very weird to have the school department have to be paying for the adult center parks and rec software to register people for programs. It's, it's an odd thing, but in some ways, it's been a good thing, because we don't have individual line items in everybody's department for IT. We do have a lot of areas where we can make improvements, and we will be doing that. But in, in terms of the HR pieces, that has been very concerning to me for quite a while. This IT study helped actually hone in on what needed to be done, and as soon as the first draft of this was circulated to me late summer, I had a separate contract drawn up with the Collin Center to start making those IT, HR changes.
That's good.
So that's already well underway.
In progress.
Because that is, right, but that's a project that's being managed out of my office, as opposed to IT.
Outside of IT.
But that also speaks to the Munis, we had, we don't really have a point Munis person, it probably shouldn't be me, because I only have view permission in Munis. It, so there's a lot of communication that needs to happen, and I think that's why we got to the point where we're at, is because we've had a lot of changes both in my position and in IT over the years, and that communication hasn't happened. And if it's not my position leading the charge for the departments, they're going to get left behind. And so that was my attempt here, is to make sure that we gathered all of the things that were working and weren't working on the town side, and gave a roadmap to IT to say, here, here's what we need to fix, which is why it didn't cover a lot of the student support stuff, partly because the town side is the side that I know the best, but also I know that IT has been focused a lot on the schools, and so I felt comfortable that that stuff wasn't being left behind. And so I felt comfortable that that stuff wasn't being left behind. But I did want to, just as we close this out, I know that the recommendation to reorganize is one that's a big one. My, to me, most importantly is tackling this other stuff that Antonio has already started working on because it's, I'm less concerned about who the IT department reports do and I'm more concerned that this stuff's actually getting done. And with the group that's here now, Antonio, Gary, and the rest of the IT staff, along with my conversations with Marty and Tom, this, these, I think will be in a much different place in a year when they come back and report on the status of this. And so I'm, I'm excited to see where this goes and I think we'll all be better off for it.
Okay, so this is something we're going to revisit as a select board and.
I think we should take Antonio up on his offer to come back in six months or a year and give us a status update.
And see where it ends. Okay. Any other comments or questions or?
I just, I just want to mention.
The other thing I would say, just on, on that, on the IT committee, and you know, that'll be done, but you know, I, I would say that you definitely need as a town to come up with the true stakeholders. I think we're, it's like the cart before the horse. We're running a race before we even know where we're trying to go and how we want to prioritize as a town. You know, I think you're a little ahead and I think you should step back and go, okay, who in town is going to direct this? Going back to what Mr. Wood said, has he created this at a time when it made tons of sense? Now you get a time to re-level set and don't get, you know, start making changes all around until you truly have everybody bought into the process and the changes. So, you know, I just, you know, IT projects can turn into a web of things, especially when we're throwing all sorts of IT projects at you. So I just would say that that group is very important for driving where this is going.
That group is important to him.
Yes.
Oh, definitely.
Because that's his board of directors, it's his support structure. When there's a big project, who's behind it type of thing, yeah.
Why I'm saying it's like that because I've been a part of these at a way bigger project than you.
I, I have been a CIO of five companies and, and one company, we put in that steering group for 10 years and it was, we met monthly, it worked great. The president made the statement at the end of each meeting is you can argue your case in this particular meeting, but I never want to hear anything about it once it's decided here, you know? Because that did, for me, it was great. It told me where I should be heading. So it's a great, it's a great tool and support for Antonio. And there's a lot of things to do. It won't happen overnight. He's got a lot of things to work on, but I encourage that long-term, right now and get it going. Yeah. Well, thank you. So in terms of a lot of things to work on, unfortunately, we have a lot, we have a lot of things to cover and then we have executive session, 8:45. So if we, I don't know if the school, if you need to adjourn your meeting.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn the December 4th, 2023 Long Meadow School Committee meeting. I will entertain a motion. So moved? Perfect. Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mary. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Zach?
You'll have to unmute yourself, Zach.
Yes.
Thank you. Jamie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you. We are adjourned.
And I make a motion to adjourn the finance committee part of this joint meeting. Do I have a second? We have a second. So Nora, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
All right. And I think Bill's done. And I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you. A bunch of just starting folks in here. No need to. So we will start with our select board announcements. Next class of users is 7:30. Okay. Then we'll go back to this. Okay, so we have our tax classification hearing, the tax rate setting that we were going to start at 7:30. And so we can start with a report on the tax classification hearing and is that something that Isaac will be?
You said a motion to enter the hearing?
Yeah.
Motion to open the hearing, so.
I'll move that we enter into the fiscal year 2024 tax classification hearing. Okay, do we have a second? Okay.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Locusa?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Hemophy?
Yes.
Mr. Zorka?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a presentation.
Guys, if you wouldn't mind, because the mic's, the mic is picking up everything.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So we will move to our fiscal 2024 tax classification hearing and would you introduce yourself and?
I'm Cat Rogers. I'm the president of Carete Appraisal. We're contracted to do the valuations for FY24.
So we have a report. Hopefully we won't read the whole thing, but you want to give us, oh, maybe you have a separate one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's hard when controlling Zoom 2. So tonight we'll talk about the tax rate analysis for 2024, the recertification of values, new growth, total taxable value, the tax levy calculation, the tax rate calculation, and some of the exemptions to consider. So you should have received a packet like this, which is a more detailed document detailing, you know, the assessed values, the tax levy, the tax rate, the board of assessors' recommendation on classification, although I don't think they gave us one. So the FY24 update is, it's a five-year update. And the only difference between that and the other years is the auditing process. So the DOR looks at our modeling, the valuations, and all the data that produce those values. The current status, the FY24 values, when I wrote this document, we're in preliminary certification, but they have been certified. Along with the 2024 growth has also been certified. And tax bills are expected to go out on time with the approved rate. So the new growth, we take from January 1st of '22 to June 30th of '23. So the total new growth is $12,324,569 or $282,480 of tax revenue. So the total taxable value, the residential class went up 14.78%. The commercial went up 21.6%. Industrial 5.65%. Personal property 2.6 and a total of 14.64%. So with the tax levy calculation, the starting point is the 23 levy limit. You add the 2.5% under Prop 2.5. You add new growth. We also had amended growth for FY23, which gives you your levy limit before any debt exclusions. Here, there is a debt exclusion, so that gets added in, giving us a maximum allowable levy of $62,355,563. The actual levy is $62,325,962, leaving an excess levy capacity of $29,601. So the calculation on a single rate is your total taxable valuation divided into the levy, which gives you .02068. And to convert that into a per thousand, it's $20.68 per thousand, which is a decrease of $2.24 or 9.77%. This slide just has some of the different shifts, just one to a 10% shift and what it would be with just the single rate. The next slide has broken down by shift. As you can see, a 1% shift on the residential rate would give you an average of $5 savings, whereas that same 1% would make the commercial, industrial, and personal property $783 more. And I just gave you a couple of shifts, 2, 5, 10, just to show what, what the impact of those would be. So there are some exemptions. There's the open space exemption, which doesn't qualify here because there's no classification for open space in Long Meadow. There's the residential exemption, which is typically used in a place that has a high level of rental properties. So that really wouldn't qualify here. And then there's the small commercial exemption, which would be for commercials that are under $1 million, which there, there are only eight of those in town. So really, all three of those really don't apply here. So setting the residential factor of 1 would give you a uniform tax rate, so one tax rate for all classes of property. And anything other than 1 would give you a shift or a split tax rate.
Okay, yes. Josh, question?
Ken, thank you for coming in. And I had a question about the, the commercial rate went up the most this year and, or largest percentage-wise. Can you just explain how you arrived at that?
Sure. It's, so what we do is we analyze all the rental income. And so five years ago, we did a rental analysis. This year, we did a rental analysis and there was a big difference. You know, typically back then, it was about $20 a square foot and we're seeing rents in the $30 a square foot range.
So it's not, it's not based on sales?
No, because as you know.
We don't sell until this week, or last week, actually. But, yeah. Josh, you all set? Oh, yeah. Tom?
Oh, yes, please. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. I don't know if you've been here, I think you've been before, it's before, and I, just so you know and other people's, I, I've been on the board now for 14 years and for 14 years I've been arguing that we need a split tax rate. And one year we did get it. And the reason for my argument is that I believe and have believed that commercial properties are undervalued in town. Not that they should be paying more, but that they've been undervalued in town. And I, I'll save you the analysis that I've done every year and I've still got it and I can share it with you and do it, showing that the rate of increase of residential property values has gone up far faster than the rate of increase for commercial properties. And my goal behind requesting a split tax rate was to try to make up for that valuation difference. And part of the reason was because, as Mr. Levine just pointed out, there have been no sales of commercial properties and so we've been basing commercial property values on, on rental income. And, and, you know, I noted clearly that, as Mr. Levine pointed out, that from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24, you now show commercial assessments up 21.6% and residential values up 14.8%. So I commend you and the board of assessors and our principal assessor for starting to get the message. But, and here's a but, okay? I'm going to use one example because we now have an example. The Long Meadow Shops, okay? The Long Meadow Shops, in the current proposal that you have, that you're proposing for us, which is fiscal year 2023 values, right, even though it's tax year 2024, has an assessed value of $20.2 million. Okay? Now, the newer year, the assessed value's gone up a little bit to $24 million. Last week, Long Meadow Shops sold for $30.4 million. That's a, that's a public document. So the assessed value is 20 million, the sale value was 30 million. That's a 50% difference. Now, when you look at residential properties, we look at, and we've done this, tracked sale value versus assessed value, they're within a few percent. Maybe they're 8 or 10% off, but never 50% off. And so, yes, we increased the commercial values this year by 21%. We're still behind by 50%. And, and I think it's across the board for all commercial properties. I think it justifies my concerns that I've expressed over the last 14 years, saying that we need to do something to better have commercial properties taxes reflect the commercial property values. And I don't know how we're going to do this, but clearly, you know, we, this sale of the Long Meadow Shops, which is the only commercial property sale I'm aware of in the last 15 or 20 years in the town of Long Meadow, ought to open up everybody's eyes that in fact our commercial properties truly have been undervalued. And if they've been undervalued by 50%, you know, frankly, you know, that's not a 1% shift in taxes. That's like a 5 or 8 or 10 or 12% shift in taxes and it will impact residents, the, the tax rate of our, of our residents. And so, you know, every year I've proposed a shift. And for folks who are new on the board, you know, Tom's shaking his head because he knows I do that, you know? And, and I know we, you know, and I'm not looking for a 50% shift in taxes, but we, I've been looking for 10% or 20% shift in taxes. If it happens, it happens. But frankly, I think the data that came out this week shows the town, shows, should show our boards of, a board of assessors, and I know we have some members here of the board and we have our, you know, and a principal assessor, should show that we have been undervaluing commercial properties significantly to the detriment of our residents in town, all to the fact of, oh, we don't want to rock the boat because they all come in here and screaming us about how high their taxes are. But in fact, you know, their, their values are, are undervalued. And so that's my pitch for tonight. I'm going to continue to propose a split tax rate until we get the values better aligned. We're clearly undervaluing commercial properties by, well, today's value is 24.3 million and they, it's sold for 30, so that's an under value of 25%. So it's, it's way beyond just this couple of percent that we see in residential properties. And I think it justifies having a split tax rate.
Josh?
I'm also, I'm going to repeat my anti-spiel from last year. And. And I, as I said last year, I think that the, the better way to make it fair for residential versus commercial is to get the proper value, not to split the shift of tax rate. And we, Ken has done his best. Let me, let me ask, that, with this sale on Friday, will that affect, will you take that into account next year on the appraisals?
So this year's was based off of twenty-two sales. So it's, you know, next year, obviously, it'll be on twenty-three. Which, yeah, we'll look at it.
So now we have a baseline. That's obviously the most valuable-
You know, it may not be every, every property. You know, it could be that specific one, but that's what we have to look at.
Yeah, we're gonna have a, pretty soon, we're gonna have a war shops right next door. So that, that's why, I think that the, the split, the way it would work to me, and Dan was here for one last year, I don't think Vene was here for the classification last year. To me, I, I, I think Mark's right. We are undervaluing commercial properties, but I think that that, the way to fix it is to value the commercial properties, not to shift the rate, because to get, if you look at the, on page ten of the slides here, if you go back up, Mark, or Mike. A fifty percent shift, a massive shift that would be crazy to do, would save the average taxpayer three hundred and forty dollars. The average commercial property would pay another forty thousand dollars almost. And that is not, the commercial, the property owner doesn't pay that. It's the, it's the tenants, it's the stores, it's, we have, you know, we're a premium town, people want to come here, but that could kill a business. We already have some empty storefronts on Long Meadow Street. And this will rock more if we did, and even a ten percent shift, five percent shift, that's four thousand dollars for those. That's just getting passed right down. We have, I think, a latest craze, it opened two months ago. I'm, I mean, I don't know the lease, but they probably have a triple net lease, which means they pay the taxes. Their share of the taxes for the building. All of a sudden, there, that's essentially their rent, goes up five hundred bucks a month. That could knock them out right there. And so, I don't think, I don't want to do that to small businesses for a very, very small, almost symbolic reduction in homeowners' taxes. And I, I am, I know people get passionate about this, but that's, that's the way I come out on this. I think we can, we're not really helping residential, and we're, we're really putting the screws to commercial. So if we, I hope we can get the value more on par. I know it's, it's, it's art, not a science, but I hope that this one sale can help get us up there.
Okay, Mark, hold on, do we hear anyone else on the board? Any comments?
Well, yeah, so I, I, I agree with everything Josh said. I think I'm pretty in tune with, with his assessment of this. The benefit to residential property taxpayers is just not there to make this kind of change. You know, obviously, property taxes, residential property taxes are a huge issue here. It's one of the biggest concerns, and we should be looking at everything we can do to, you know, limit the effect of that, especially when we're talking about seniors in town who want to stay here but cannot because of our high residential property taxes. But I, I don't think that this is the way to do it. I don't think that the benefit is there. And, and like Josh said, I'm thinking about the small business owners, like the latest craze, like One Way, who, they're going to bear the brunt of such a massive change like this.
And Dan, did you have any input on this? No, okay.
I mean, I, I, well, no, no, I can jump in, so. No, I mean, I definitely, I agree with what Denise just said, as well as Josh. But also, Mark, I mean, you do make some, you make valid points, but we just don't have the amount of commercial property in town that, that makes, that's going to make a huge dent or impact. And I also look at the small businesses as well, and we still have open storefronts and section of town, that town that we need to address with some of those open storefronts. So I don't like to pay taxes like everybody else, but I also like to have nice things in town and the services that we have. And, you know, whether it's fortunately or unfortunately, you don't have the, the type of commercial tax base like other types of towns that are out there in the Commonwealth. So I support the single tax rate on that in front of us.
Okay, and I, I'd feel the same way. You know, we've had a single tax rate most years I've lived in town, and I would, you know, it's just a small percent, less than two percent for commercial properties, so. But I'm optimistic that property valuations will change, and, and that will work to the advantage of the towns and residents, so. Now, there's an open hearing, and so I don't know if there's anyone from the community that wanted to speak. This is your opportunity. Okay, so then, one-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I did see there was a message on the chat from Andrea Brunel.
Yep, I haven't pulled up right now.
Oh, okay. Great.
We usually don't take Q and A in the chat, but if you would like to, if you're still in the chat and you would like to make a comment, you're more than welcome to press the raise hand icon, and we'll let you in to, to speak.
Okay, so, or, does someone read?
Yep, she's on.
Oh.
All right, I'm gonna move you and his panelists now.
Hi Andrea, go ahead and with your comment.
For entertaining my question. My question was, there's a lot of concern among myself and all the residents about exactly what comps were used for the assessments, because many of our properties have gone up a hundred thousand dollars and more. In looking at the list, the only properties that seem to have gone down in, in assessed value were some condos. That, and I just wanted to say that, that, you know, I do agree with Mark's reasoning. I understand that it's not going to be a large benefit to residents if we have the dual, the dual tax rate, but there is an equity issue here about how the burden is shouldered.
Okay, thank you.
And just name an address for the record, please.
Yeah, Andrea, your name and address?
Andrea Brunel, fifty-four Wildgrove Lane.
Okay, thank you, because we should have started with that. And then, okay, so that's where we're at. Mark, you wanted to make another comment?
Yeah, if I could, thank you, Tom. You know, a couple, a couple of comments. Josh, I absolutely agree with you that the right way to do this is properly evaluate commercial properties. The problem is, I've been saying that for fifteen years, and it hasn't happened. And I hope it does now, but it hasn't. And, 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 you know, I, I get the fact that if we went to a fifty percent shift, it's, you know, forty thousand dollars, or some ridiculous amount of money on the commercial properties, saves homeowners three hundred bucks, which is not insignificant, given the fact that this high school was built with an additional cost to every homeowner of three hundred and fifty dollars. But the point being that, had we done that fifteen years ago, and gone up one percent difference every year, it wouldn't have been a, an overwhelming burden of one shot on commercial values. And in fact, it would have been a benefit over time. And I understand that I'm, I'm arguing a losing battle here. But I think it's nevertheless worth people understanding that, that we have not been able to, for whatever reason, and I don't blame individuals, it's the process or whatever it is, we have not been able to get equitable values of our commercial properties in town. And because of that, we do have this inequity, and commercial properties should be paying more money. And would it drive them out? Yeah, it would drive them out if we put, raised it by forty thousand dollars in one shot. But if we went up one percent this year, and one percent next year, one percent, and, and then when we get to inequity in commercial values, we withdraw it. But we have not been able to do, we have not been able to get equitable values in commercial property. And again, we're talking fifty percent difference in commercial values versus what their assessed value is. It's not the one, or two, or five percent, I'm not gonna nickel and dime people. This is a massive difference. These, these properties, you know, if it was really valued at thirty million dollars, their tax bill would be fifty percent higher, even at the same tax rate that we have now. And it's not, so it's, it's that inequity that I have no other way of, of asking the town to address, and my fellow select board members to address, than by saying, split the tax rate a little bit this year, and a little bit more next year. And if we find out that, yes, we've made the adjustment in assessed values versus, you know, versus commercial values, then we, then we withdraw it. But we have never been able to do it, and frankly, given the systems we have, I don't know that we'll be able to do it again. Clearly, the sale will go a long way toward helping that happen. So that's, that's my response. I understand the situation. I understand that we're not going to a fifty percent split rate in one year, you know? But we also have not been able to get any equity. And so, my intent is to get residential properties to pay assessed value based on their commercial value, and to get commercial properties to pay their assessed value based on their market, free market value.
Thank you, thank you. So what I'd like to do is just take a vote on this, if I get a motion.
We gotta close the hearing first.
Oh, close the hearing. Yeah. Please step up.
So just a couple of points why I agree this might be an okay year to do this. And, and one of them is that we are actually at the lowest rate that we've had in a really long time. So that point two oh is significantly lower. Just, what, three years ago, it was at twenty-four point six. All right, so the rate's going down. So you could basically say, well, we could hold the commercial at the twenty-twenty-three rate, and that would be in that ten percent rate change, but like, hold it flat, and then give that additional back to the residential would be a way of thinking of that. Our commercial will still be higher than East Long Meadow, but West Springfield is up at a thirty rate for its commercial. So if you look around the area, there are other communities that have a lot of commercial that are able to support a much higher tax rate against it. So you just may think, because we are coming down right now, this is an opportunity, as Mark's saying, that we could do the split, that wouldn't, I think, put a lot of burden on the, on the commercial, but would give some additional tax relief to the residential. Oh, sorry, Erica Wyda, one sixty-two Cambridge Circle.
Thank you. And you introduced yourself earlier in the meeting also, so, but thank you. Any, I don't know if we have any further discussion, or?
I mean, I, I, I just want to say that I don't think that we can say that every commercial property is valued fifty percent less. Just going off of the sale on the shops. I mean, that is the most, you know, that's, that's the most, you know, that's the best commercial property we have in town. And to just go off of that and say that every, that every other commercial property is, you know, not valued, or, you know, devalued at the same rate, you know, I don't think, I feel comfortable going off of that. And then, you know, and, and it might be true that our assessments might be off, but we really don't know how much they're off. And, you know, that's, I think that that's something that you've been saying, Mark, but I don't, you know, I, I think I would need numbers, or I would need something more to be able to, to be able to really, you know, believe that.
What I haven't shared with you, because you're new here, is the graphs I have from nineteen eighty-three to twenty-twenty-two, at least, showing the rate at which residential properties have increased in value, and then showing the rate at which commercial properties have gone up in value. And the difference is stark and marketing, and, and, and very, very apparent. And so, it's not that I think that, you know, they're all fifty percent difference. What I can see is just the rate of growth year over year. It wasn't, that was my basis historically. I mean, and the part of the problem we have, for example, is, you know, and just pointing this out. You know, we use rent as a revenue, as a, as a way of doing it. How do we deal with a, a facility like Big Y? They don't pay rent, they own the place, right? So how do we evaluate the Big Y Shopping Center?
Right, no, I, I think we can go on for this for quite a while.
But, Tom, the most important thing we do in town here is set the property rate, and I understand that. It's, you know, I'm not gonna win the battle, but I think people need to understand that there's been an inequity. And to, Friday's sale of the Long Meadow Shops has finally pointed out something that's been going on for years. And, and Josh, I, I get it, I understand you can't do it. But, and, you know, my, my push has been for the Board of Assessors, or for the Principal Assessor, this goes back to when Roger LeClair was, so that's like three principal assessors ago. You know, was, how do we, we've, we've got to do something different. Because clearly, I, I would hope, Ken, that you would look at this and say, oh my goodness, we're off by fifty percent.
All right, Mark, we've got to, we've got to move on. We have a tight agenda. And, you know, and we, I think your suggestion that maybe next year, we could have a list of all the commercial properties and what they're valued at compared to the one that was just sold at thirty million, that would be helpful for the board to sort of look at that in perspective, in perspective. Because yes, some properties sort of out of the way are definitely not worth thirty million dollars. But we did have a twenty-one percent increase in the tax rate, right? Twenty-one percent.
On the commercial property values.
On commercial property values, compared to fourteen percent in the homes. So I'd like, I'd look for a motion to, to close the hearing, unless people have more to discuss. One more thing I'd like to say. Last year, I asked for comps on a commercial. I, I think that using rent only is, as the point on Big Y, it is, has some downsides to it. Now, we do have a comp, but I, I know we're, like, the shops may be a unique situation in town and in the surrounding towns, but I do think we need to look at other properties to get us a better idea of what these properties are worth, beyond just the rent. And I hope that the shops can help with that. And, you know, and if we don't see something happen with this, and I'd be curious to see with that list, if we can come up with it. You know, I'm not, I, if we don't see it change next year, I would, Mark, I would start considering your way. I'm not, you know, I can be convinced, I'm not. But I, I think that we do have, finally have a change this year, and I hope that we see that that make a change. But otherwise, the, my last two points, we are five percent commercial. That's why the splits are so disparate, and I want people to understand that. We, we're not West Springfield, West Springfield has an insane amount of commercial. And so they are able to sustain a split like that, and they've been doing it for a long time. So the tenants there, a lot of them are massive, and can, can shoulder that change. And then my la, the last thing, I heard from people in the open forum, somebody put on the valuation list, and people were stopping me, how could you say my house went up a hundred and fifty grand? Well, if you were selling it, you'd be pretty damn happy that that was your value. So you can't have it both ways. If anyone watched the real estate market in the last year, or the last three years, you can't be shocked your house value went up. If you had gone to sell it, you would, you would have been over the moon. So that's why your, your value went up. It's based on real sales, it's not pulled out of the blue, so that's what it is. If you don't like it, there are processes, you can go, once you might get an appraisal and find out that was right, so.
Josh, it's worth pointing out that people who say their value went up a hundred thousand dollars, our tax rate is going down ten percent. You know, so values don't mean anything, it's the taxes you pay, which is simply your value times your tax rate. And so people need to understand that when everybody's taxes rate, when everybody's value went up in town, the tax rate did in fact come down. Now, taxes are still gonna go up for everybody, we have to understand that, because that's life in the big world.
Right, okay, if we could move this along. Can I have a motion?
I'll move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, okay. Roll call, vote?
Yeah, Mr. LaCusa?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Hemophy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Zerko?
Yeah.
All right, and do we have a motion on setting the tax rate?
I make a motion to adopt the factor of one in order to maintain a single tax rate for all property classes for the fiscal twenty-twenty-four tax year.
Second.
Second, I'm at, okay. All right. Roll call, vote?
Mr. LaCusa?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
You can ask for discussion.
For discussion? I could ask for discussion, yeah? Any other further discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none?
Yeah, Mr. LaCusa?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
No.
Mr. Hemophy?
Yes.
Mrs. Zerko?
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help. And hopefully, we'll hear some more about the- Appreciate your help. And hopefully, we'll hear some more about the rates of properties next year. It'll be helpful. All right. Before we move on to resident comments, I think we just have a few announcements that we generally say, and we haven't had a chance to get to them. And so the first is that the Long Meadow Moderator is looking for applicants for the Rules Committee. The Rules Committee was established by the Town Charter to advise the moderator on issues of procedure. This is a, basically, a committee that hadn't gotten a lot of notoriety until they decided to change the way we held our town meeting, or the fact that we didn't have a town meeting during COVID, or it was a modified one. So they're looking for, there's two vacancies that need to be filled, and these positions will be for terms ending in 2026. Interested parties can fill out an application and find out more information about the committee by visiting www-longmeadow.gov/civicalerts. And interviews will be conducted in the week of December 18th, with appointments in January. The 2023 Leaf Collection, the leaf site on West Road is being extended till Sunday, December 10. The site will be open seven days a week, 8 to 5, until December 10. A recycling pass is required. Stop a Cruiser toy drive. The Long Meadow Police Department will be hosting their fourth annual Stuff a Cruiser toy drive to benefit families in need of during the holiday. The toy drive will be held on December 9 from 11 to 1 at the Police Department, 34 Williams Street. They will be accepting donations of new unwrapped toys for children between the ages of newborn to 13. And if you're unable to attend the event, but wish to donate, you can find additional information on the Long Meadow Police Department's social media page. And Santa Run will be happening. Join the Long Meadow Fire Department, their annual Santa Run on Sunday, December 17 at 3:00 PM. Come out and see Santa and the company ride through the town on ladder one. And full details can be found in the Long Meadow Department's Facebook page. And so next, we will go to resident comments. I don't know if we have any residents who would... Any sign? Okay. No hands raised? All right. So then let's move on to select board comments. Josh?
I just want to congratulate Greg Keen and Lucy Kano, who won the Bright Nights 5K last Monday, and Henry Sacco and Mary Guebert won the 14 to 19 year age group. So that's a pretty clean sweep by Long Meadow High School lacrosse, cross country. So that was great. They were much faster than me running in my gingerbread costume. But I was very proud to see that. They did a great job. It's a tough course. So that was great.
Okay. I just wanted to mention two upcoming events. Tomorrow, at the Greater Springfield, YMCA EverSource is holding an open house from 6 to 8:30 about the gas pipeline project. And so I think that this might be what was required by MIPA as a public outreach meeting. So if folks want to go hear what it say and want to ask questions, please go over there. And then also, next week, on December 12, the Energy and Sustainability Committee is hosting an event on heat pumps. And so this is held over Zoom. It starts at 7:00 PM. You can register for it and find information about it at the store's library website. And, you know, heat pumps are very super, you know, they're super efficient and can, you know, help with cooling and heating your home. So if you want to learn more about it, and right now, there's tons of incentives out there to buy a heat pump. So if you want to learn more about it, you know, please check it out.
Okay, great. Dan, anything else? Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for Lena, our veterans agent in town, for hosting the Veteran Holiday Party last weekend. I know Beneath was there, Tom, you were there, and Mark as well. It was really good to, you know, to see there in the presence with everyone who really dedicated, you know, all their commitment and really their life put on the line over the years for our country. So really appreciate that event. I thought it was a great event to honor everybody. In particular, there was also a cable there who unfortunately had lost some loved ones recently and, you know, during the holidays. It's a tough time, of course, for everybody. So I just wanted to thank Lena and all the veterans who came there and the board members to support our veterans like we always do. The other thing I wanted to thank the First Church for the annual tree lighting. I was there with Josh, and I didn't realize how nice of a voice Josh had as well. Quite the singer. So wanted to commend Josh on that. And the other thing was just a quick update from Long Range Planning that I serve on. So I know we're going to be receiving a letter soon from the committee, just with a couple of, I don't want to say concerns, but just some areas that they want the select board in town to look at further when it comes to the relocation of the town offices over at Greenwood. So we'll keep an eye out for that. But other than that, that's all that I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. And Mark, roll.
Just a couple of updates, too. For the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's, you know, municipal planning organization still now, luckily, this last meeting, the Long Meadow L Project has not slipped any further. So it's still 2025, which is way out there, but it's still on the docket. And also that I was at a building committee meeting, they also discussed the potential, and I know Lynn was there too, to discuss the potential for relocating town offices. And I'm sure that they're going to have plenty back to say, plenty to say back to us as we ask them to weigh in on that discussion.
Okay. So that's it. Let's move on to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you.
If you can give some abbreviated version.
Yes, definitely. And this came late today. It was uploaded to the website because I was waiting on one key thing I wanted to update on, and I needed to do that after I had confirmation. So I'll get to that. So I did include a paragraph in here about the property tax valuations for FY '24. I know that once those bills were released a couple weeks ago, there was a lot of conversation in the community about the increase. And so we do have some FAQs that are available on the website. But the biggest thing to know is that these are based on sales that occurred between January 1, 2022, and December 31, 2022. So we all know the real estate market was insane then, and we're a year, this is the way that the valuations work, we're a year behind that. So I know that causes quite a bit of concern. But if you do have questions, please reach out to the Assessor's Office, and they can help you. And so the piece of information that I was delayed in getting to you, getting this report to you tonight, was that when the Long Meadow Shops were approved to expand in 2015, there was a requirement in the site and design approval from the planning board that $250,000 in traffic mitigation payment was to be made to the town. The payment was to be set up in two installments, one with the certificate of occupancy being issued, which was on March 8, 2017. And then the second was six months later, on September 8 of 2017. Leading up to the most recent special fall town meeting, I had a resident inquire in my office to get a copy of the traffic study that related to that expansion. He also asked where those traffic mitigation funds were being held. This caused us to start looking for proof of that payment, and we were unable to find proof of that payment at the time. And through a lot of hard work, we, I am pleased to say that we successfully reached an agreement to receive the funds with interest. And the town is now in receipt of the traffic mitigation funds, which are being set aside into a designated account. I want to thank Jim Moran for his records request, because that led us to uncover these funds that should have been received in 2017. And to ditto what Beneath had said earlier, the Long Meadow Energy and Sustainability Committee sponsoring a Zoom seminar on heat pumps. That's co-hosted by the store's library. And so I would encourage everyone to attend if you have any questions or just want to learn more about it. There are a lot of rebates and incentives out there, and homeowners should take advantage of it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Lynn. You know, the, again, I mentioned last week, or last meeting about what great work it was that we got that traffic mitigation payment. You're doing a great job with that. And then heat pumps, it's just interesting, because for a town like Long Meadow with so many long homes, so many old homes, man, but so many old homes, heat pumps are just a great way for people to get air conditioning, you know, without, you know, a huge expenditure of putting in, you know, vents or all sorts of ductwork in their home and so forth. So that's great news. Any other comments on the manager's report? Yes.
No, I just thank you to Lynn in your office and Jay Tallerman, our attorney, for working on getting the funds back and negotiating that. So you're kind of under the wire. It's a quick turnaround, and so thank you for that.
Okay. If we can get a approval of the meeting minutes of 11:06?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting, the regular meeting minutes from November 6, subject to some typos and corrections I had sent Mike separately.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those, will we do a roll call vote?
Mr. LaCusa?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yeah.
Thank you. And now, we had a dog as a nuisance complaint investigation that came before the board, at a recent meeting, and we did receive a report on this. And is our animal control officer going to make any comments?
So, no, not at this meeting, but the recommendation is to schedule a hearing.
The recommendation is what?
Is to schedule a hearing.
To schedule a hearing?
Yep. So at the last meeting, just to provide everyone perspective, the board voted to initiate, cause the investigation, and then the investigation has been had, and now the recommendation from the animal control officer is to schedule a hearing. So it's under your purview to figure out when you want the hearing to be, and you know, the holiday's coming up. I'm not sure what you, you know, what.
Yeah. Well, it was clear in the reports, the police reports and so forth. They tried to resolve this, and it didn't sound like things we made a lot headway. So can we get a motion for a hearing?
Yeah, I'll move we set a hearing for, what's our first meeting in January, Mark?
It's January 2.
January 2.
I'll move we set a dog hearing for January 2.
Yeah. And then I think, I think the 15th is MLK Day.
So we meet on the 16th, yeah.
Should we do that? Yeah. All right. Yeah, I amend it to, move that we have set a dog nuisance complaint hearing for, from the November 15, 2023 complaint for January 16, 2024.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? I think, you know, given that time, it gives the parties involved a little bit more time to work things out also. So, you know, that's almost, any other comments? Or, okay, hearing none? We'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. LaCusa?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yeah.
Okay. We're moving along. The, we'll move into new business, which is the recycling center calendar year fees, reviewing these fees. And we can, if you just, give your name and your title, actually, yeah.
I'm Lisa Oxon, the DUCW Business Manager.
Okay.
Arlene Miller, member of the Recycling Commission.
All right. So, so we're looking at these reviews, you know, like, recommendations for new sticker prices and different events. I mean, I don't know if you want to just give a quick description of how important these fees are to the recycling center?
So the recycling center is open to, all residents can buy a pass. Sticker fees get them into the recycle center and the yard waste, yard waste center, and also the leaf site on West Road. We look at all the fees for what we dispose of. And so some items are free to dispose. They're probably items that, you know, maybe scrap metal we get paid for. But then there's other items that have a cost to the town to dispose of. Then we also have the yard waste, which is free to dispose, but we don't charge residents because it's too hard to determine how much to charge per person. So looking at what the expenses were versus the revenues, we're recommending that we raise the sticker price by $5 for all the regular, the senior, and the additional sticker. And then we looked at the fees for the individual items and just made minor modifications to clarify what should be charged so that people know when they're going, what they're going to be charged for.
Okay.
The goal is not to make money on this. It's trying to break even. So we're just trying to stay up with the inflation of disposal.
Okay. And last year, did you guys lose money? Do you know?
Yeah. So last year, we looked at how much the expenses were, and they were much greater than what we had brought in. We did have a third leaf, or a third yard waste collection. So normally, we only have two in a year, but based on where the fiscal year's dropped, we did have three. So that was sort of an outlier.
Okay. Well, thank you. Great presentation. And Josh?
We'd still lose money with this, but slightly less. Is that right?
Yes. Well, the hope would be that we're sort of more breaking even. We're also, we've done some retraining of the attendance so to make sure that they're collecting when they should be. Like, the landscapers also have a pass that they pay per trip. We've seen a big increase this year that we've made sure that we're collecting every trip.
So like those big trucks?
Yes.
You don't just get a sticker, you, okay. And speaking of those leaves, are those the same leaves that are spread on the farm across the way? Do they pay for that?
So you pay for the sticker if you're dropping at West Road?
No, does the farm pay for the leaves?
The farm does not pay.
The farm rents the land.
He rents the land from the town, and then he has the mulcher, and we assist him with loading the mulcher, and he spreads it.
So that's how those leaves get over there?
Yes.
All right. I didn't realize he was renting that land, too. All right. Just curious. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the fees? So I, you asked toddler bed to the list, and you have twin mattresses, box springs. I mean, how big is a toddler bed? Is it like pretty small?
Well, there was a new law last year that all mattresses can't be, they have to be recycled. So it was just to clarify that the toddler bed is a part of that state law that needs to be recycled. So when they pay for the $20, we are paying to have it recycled. If they ever get moldy or, you know, wet, we then do have to put it into bulk, and we pay like $50 per mattress. It's like a special item. They pull it out of the dumpster. So that's sort of to hope that they all get, you know, recycled.
Okay. So size doesn't really matter that much.
At that point.
It does. But yes, these are very reasonable prices. Long Meadow residents are very fortunate.
And, all right. Any other discussion on this change? Oh, yes. Dan?
So when you mentioned the landscapers have increased 35%, do they pay the same fee from sticker perspective?
No. So a dump truck is $50, and a pickup truck is $35, and they're per trip.
And these are town residents, though? Is that what I'm?
They're a landscaper that has to get, they give us a list of what residents in town that they're providing service for. So they have to prove that they are collecting yard waste from the town.
There's no way, there's no way to monitor that. They obviously work for people in Long Meadow, but they come from anywhere.
Thank you.
All right. Are you going to make a motion?
Yeah, I was.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the fiscal year, excuse me, calendar year 2024 recycling and yard waste, recycling fees as distributed to the select board in the package.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Roll call vote.
Mr. LaCusa?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you'll break even this year. All right. Our next thing is the annual liquor license renewals. And this is something we have to do every year. So this is for 2024 liquor license renewals. And I, you know, we usually just make sure all the proper paperwork has been submitted. Michael, is that?
Yeah, I think I pretty much.
Yeah, I think I pretty much outlined everything in that memo. You know, the renewal form, certification of, excuse me, certificate of inspection if it's applicable, liability insurance, compensation insurance, tips, and, you know, the D O R form, which is a town requirement. You know, obviously the bottle shop not being open right now, do, do not, do not have all of that paperwork in hand, but I do have the renewal form. And then, you know, one of the, two of the biggest things are, you know, general bylaw, the, you know, taxes pass due more than sixty days. It would be my suggestion and recommendation that any approval would be contingent upon, you know, those taxes or general billing become up to date as of a certain date that you, you would like to determine. As we've done in the last couple of years, the, they were, the A B C C requires a seasonal population increase estimate form, which we usually just use our census figure from, from the prior year. And Long Meadow Police Department will be conducting compliance checks throughout December, and we should have a report back to you for the next meeting on that. And, you know, once approved, we, we send back to the A B C C sometime in the new year.
Okay, yes.
So I just have a question about the bottle shop. So obviously it wasn't their fault that they're, can't open right now. Do we, and I, you can't have a pocket license for too long. So I'm wondering, do we have any options? Can we require that they tell us they're going back when the plaza is rebuilt, or that they have a purchase and sale in hand to sell the, the license? Do we have any options on that? And can we make our renewal contingent? Because I don't want to take it away because it, obviously it's still in flux, but it's going to happen over there.
Right, yeah. So you're absolutely right. There's, a lot of it's outlined in the statute too for, for terminating the license if the business fails to open. But if they prove that they have every intent to open, and they're working on opening, there is some leeway that the, the board can give for that. So my suggestion would be to invite the owners to a meeting or to have them, you know, you could direct me to reach out to them to have them submit a detailed letter with their plan in place going forward into the year, and then you guys could kind of set your timeframe from there. I don't know how you feel about that, but.
If I recall, Josh, didn't we suspend their fee last year?
Yes, we did.
So, I mean, we could certainly do that again, you know, while, because they're not open. But you're right, I think we need to do that in conjunction with some indication that they plan on reopening.
So just to clarify, you did suspend their fee for twenty-two. They did pay for twenty-three. The fee wasn't suspended for twenty-three. So for twenty-two, that was about, renewals were happening about three weeks after the fire. That fee for that coming year was, was voided. And then for twenty-three, after a year is past, that fee was paid.
I'm okay keeping the fee on because if they, if they do go back or if they're going to sell it, it's a pretty, it's a very valuable license.
Not in Long Meadow, it's not. We have extra licenses.
Then we don't have a liquor license.
No, we don't.
That's the last one.
You only get one per five thousand. So I think this is our fourth or fifth. So it would be, yeah, there, it would be very valuable. So I'm, I'm okay keeping it on with the intention of having them back in February or so, so that we can talk to them.
Yeah. And, and, you know, because people are asking about that property and why there's no building going on. And, you know, you look at certain, like insurance companies, if, if you have a gallbladder problem, then you say, okay, X amount of money, we'll fix your gallbladder. You're well set. But when it comes to property damage due to a fire, so they have to negotiate each, each item, and it could take a long time. And that'd be, be part of the reason that things have delayed quite a bit, and that would be, have nothing to do with former tenants, you know, who, who want to get back and get to work. So, all right. So do we have a?
Well, yeah, sorry. No, no, I, I like Mike's suggestion to either direct Mike to reach out to them to provide us a letter or have them come before us and, and, you know, and detail their plans. So, yeah, I think we should decide on one of those avenues.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'm fine with having Mike, you know, I, I don't necessarily need to have them come before us. I, I'm fine with having Mike reach out to them and have them provide a letter with their plans.
Okay.
I guess it goes with the letters, so.
Right.
Right, okay. So then, so you'd be looking for a motion that would approve all licenses except for, for the, for Seasons, but?
I think we're, I don't know. We, we can just approve it because if we, if they decide halfway through the year, they're not going to open. We, I don't know if we can, well, we'd have to find it out. But could we yank it halfway through the year?
You, you could approve it and have it expire in six months. It doesn't have to be the full year approval.
I, I don't know. I, I don't want to monkey around with that. They, the, the building burned down. I'd say we approve it for the year, but maybe this is the last time we do it without movement. I, that can be kind of informal, but that would be my thought. Just approve it, but ask them to send us a letter explaining what's going on.
Okay. So, so we look for approval for all of them, but we've asked, we included the bottle shop sends a letter to give us some, an update on where they're at, where they're going. Okay. Any other comments?
Why are we, why are we renewing the Clubhouse Cafe? I thought that was a seasonal.
Yeah, that, that was just on the, my overall spreadsheet. I think I may have indicated on there.
It says renew is April first.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry.
That's a separate bar.
We'll do that. There are summer license, seasonal.
I think we ought to just do this by.
Okay. So, so if you, if we accept what Josh said as a motion, and then we'll look for a second on that?
Tom, I'd like to separate the license for liquor stores from, or package stores from restaurants. We've done that in the past, I think.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor license renewal for Delaney Market LLC, Seasons Liquor LLC, Homshiv Say Ram LLC, which is the Long Meadow Package Store, and a bottle shop in Oxbow Alliance.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Here and none? Roll call vote?
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Mr. Zerka?
Yeah.
All right.
And I'll make a motion, we approve the liquor license renewal for the following restaurants. Barbecue Billy's LLC, Spurt, Spartano Inc., Lee Guang Brothers, Long Meadow Country Club, and Max Burgers, Extra Anchovies LLC, Long Meadow Kitchen, Long Meadow Hospitality LLC, and Wolf's Want Enterprises LLC, and for malt only, the No Malt Extract LLC.
Second. Okay. All right. And all those, you've covered all of them?
Yep. The only thing.
All right, great. So roll call vote?
Yep. Uh, Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Mr. Zerka?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're all set with that? Great. We're?
And then just the seasonal population form, it's just the vote to, I could read it out, but it's acting under authority contained in M G L. The board held a meeting on this date estimating the temporary increased resident population as of July tenth, twenty twenty-four will be. And my suggestion would be to just use the census figure, which is fifteen thousand eight hundred fifty-three.
Okay. So, all right, so the seasonal population form, is that, do we need to approve it?
Yeah, I just need to.
Okay.
I'll move that we approve the seasonal population forms in the census figure.
Second, okay. Roll call vote?
Yep. Uh, Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Mr. Zerka?
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to be a little bit late, but not bad. We need to just approve the common vicular like applications for the calendar year twenty twenty-four. And we have a list of these businesses that include a lot of the ones we've been discussing, and then some other non-alcoholic licenses.
So I'll move that we approve the common vic license for Fletcher's Barbecue Shop, Grapevine Pizzeria, These Brothers, Long Meadow Country Club, Max Burger, One Way Brewing, Posto, The Meeting House, The Thirsty Dog, and Twin Hills Country Club.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. Roll call vote?
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Mr. Zerka?
Yeah.
Do we want to approve Jersey Mike's once we have that one?
Yeah. So with, with the Thanksgiving holiday, the letter kind of went out.
They haven't.
They haven't submitted their application yet. Jersey Mike's, we had it already, and that's what kind of got me to look into the system. So I gave them until mid-December to submit it because of the Thanksgiving holiday.
So, yeah, and I, I saw Nate was on. I don't know if he stuck with us this long, but.
He's on there.
Thank you to Nate for pointing this out, or for following Jersey Mike's protocol and submitting a common vic license and making the town realize we have to go after all these other restaurants to get their common vic license. So thank you. I'll move that we approve the Jersey Mike's common vic license.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Mr. Zerka?
Yeah.
Okay. So the rest of these folks will be submitting letters or license applications, and we'll do them in the new year?
Yep.
Okay. Great. And then, I believe that's it. We're ready to look for a motion to vote, you know, vote to enter an executive session. Does someone want to make the motion?
Um, I move to enter executive session.
Yeah.
In regards to, in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with regard to anticipated, anticipated litigation relative to the D P W site and enforcement and potential litigation relative to six 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 to seven three four Bliss Road Site and Design Review Provisions of the Long Meadow Zoning Bylaws, discussion of which an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town, and the chair so declares. Not to, not to recommend an open session.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
And Mr. Zerka?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll be closing the public section of our meeting tonight and go into executive session. Thank you for watching. We'll see you in two weeks.